Good evening, good evening residents of Litchfield and welcome to September 18th, 2019 school board meeting. I'd like to begin with the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any revisions to the agenda?
We do not.
Some non-public actions from September 4th, 2019. Mr. McDonald made a motion to approve the August 21st, 2019, non-public minutes. Mrs. Harrison's second. Motion carried 500. We have some LMS students.
Yeah, and so just a reminder to the board that we're changing our procedure this year. So we've labeled this as the LMS student showcase and Principal Lecliter will introduce the students and teachers who are here to talk with you about what's happening in the classrooms.
Great, thank you very much. We're excited. I want to thank these students for coming tonight. So we have Violet Ankle, Bridget Hidalgo, Scott Hirschberger, Caitlin Otis, Ms. Corbille, computer science teacher, Eric Momney wanted to be here, had a family obligation come up. He has a video that we're going to show you tonight, so, so thank you. I'll do a quick intro and I will be quick, I promise. So, we're going to talk about a few of our STEAM units. We talk a lot about that at the middle school. I've talked about it in some of our reports over the past couple of years. We've just made incredible progress in this area over the last few years. And, so we wanted to highlight a few of what we do, the units, some of the resources. We have a lot invested in STEAM in the district and in our schools. So, we have two classes we're going to highlight tonight. And is that, is that presentation up? So, this, this here is the Tech Ed STEAM class and computer science class. So, Ms. Corbille teaches computer science, Mr. Momney teaches Tech Ed STEAM, and we're going to show some of the, some of the things kids are doing. So, just to start on this, the goal is to build 21st century skills. We're not looking for the students to just memorize facts and information that they can recall in a test. We want them applying basic skills and knowledge in, and transferring into deeper arenas. We want them problem solving. And so, the four basic tenets of 21st century learning, critical thinking, creativity, collaboration, teamwork, and communication. I say, I think you'll see that theme weave through what you're going to see tonight. One of the big resources we use is through Project Lead the Way. And they, they offer units and, and there's a lot of different supplies and things that go with that. So, we have a number of units listed here in our school right now. You can see that grade 5, 7, and 8 science, Tech Ed, and Computer Lit are the main classes where, where we use these, these units. And the teachers are all trained in the, in the units. At this point, we are, we, we have what we call refill kits each year to sustain the units, but we've had a lot of support of this over the years. So, you can see infection detection, medical detective, science of technology, magic of electrons. And then tonight, we're going to highlight Tech Ed, Computer Lit, and four units, design and modeling, automation, app creators, and innovators and makers. And now I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Corbille and our students. Thank you.
So, just a quick before I throw the kids into it, myself and Eric Momney, we in this district are very fortunate that all of our 6th and 7th graders hit a full year of this STEM immersion that we do. And it's really hands-on and it's really project-based and the kids really kind of take off. They get engaged and they really drive the direction of the class, which is really neat and interesting that Litchfield was able to give this opportunity to their students. So, I think it's really cool. We have three current 7th graders here and one 8th grader because my current 7th graders are in the first half of that year, so they actually haven't taken the robotics section of that yet. Caitlin took it last year, so she can speak to that. But the rest of them have taken the, at least started three of the four courses. They just started acting vendor 11 days ago, I think it's day 11 or day 12. And they've already created apps, which they'll share with you, but I want to turn it over to them. And if they need support, I will jump in, but I think they're pretty good with this.
I have a, I have a quick question. I mean, I thought there was a class, so there's computer literacy?
That's what we call it, yes.
Okay, so, complet, is that the class that you teach to which grade?
That's the class that I teach to the end of 6th grade, the second half of 6th grade and the beginning of 7th grade. And it's kind of, you know, computer literacy, we struggle with the name for it every year. But really, I think to be literate, using computers now, you have to know how to program. And so, a lot of what these kids do is program blocks, called block programming. They do touch on a little bit of script if they're ready for in some of the applications. But yeah, the name can be a little bit...
So, it's not the same as Lit Tech, which they...
Correct, that's a different, that's a, that's a literacy-based class.
I just wanted to make sure I was thinking about the right class.
This is like kind of a STEM immersion that we do to our 6th and 7th graders when they hit the middle school.
Okay, thank you.
So, we'll start with design and modeling.
Design and modeling, does anybody want to talk to that?
Okay, so, design and modeling was Tech Ed class. We did that in 6th grade. One of the big projects we did was the ankle forathosis, which you can see the picture there. So, we had to design a solution to a problem where there was...
There was cerebral, kids with cerebral palsy wanted like a boot, like so they could be able to move their foot up like this, but not down, so they couldn't walk on their toes. It was kind of like a splint or something. So, we had to design a solution with a group and test it and then build it.
Those are five different projects that the students sit on the bottom right?
Yeah.
Awesome.
Can you identify any of yours?
No, mine is just like a big boot that you would wear if you had like a cast on, so it doesn't look like something.
And then they have some other projects in there as well.
Yes. This one that's being passed around, they actually do 3D modeling in the class? Does anyone remember the software you used?
Sketchup.
Sketchup, oh. And do you remember the new connector for your modeling with the vax that I'm handing around right now? Do you guys remember what those were?
Yeah, you had to make like a cube and like make all the pieces fit together. So...
Yeah, we had to design all the pieces on Sketchup and then we built them and glued the cubes together with hot glue.
Oh, so you made all those cubes?
Yeah.
Nice. And then we designed, and then we like tested each other's like puzzles. So, we went around and like timed ourselves.
So, again, they used the 3D modeling software in order to do that. So, they could get right from the stages.
Okay.
Robotic Caitlin, this is you.
So, this is a 7th grade portion of the Tech Ed class that we have, which we did robotics and automation, which used VEX robotics to build different projects and that we tested. And one of them was like a drag race. So, we raced against classmates to see who could do this. And we learned about deratious with that one because of, which would go faster. And we learned simple like programming and we learned more advanced once we got into more advanced projects that we had to do. And then we did a balsa wood bridge towards the end of the year. And we all had to build one with balsa wood and hot glue. And those were what we had. And we had to sketch out what we were going to do first. And then we drew like a better model of it. And then we built them and we tested whose could hold the most weight in the class.
So, I'm going to show you a clip of a video that Mr. Momney put together. This gives you a quick summary of some of the things the kids are doing.
I'm going to go on once.
Nice.
And let's see if I can get it back to present mode here.
I like they're still working with wood since they don't have woodworking anymore.
Yeah.
Like hands-on.
Yeah.
These really try to do to what they're going to design and kind of borrow all of the materials that they jump.
Okay, so now we move into innovators and makers, 6th grade.
So, innovators and makers. This is one of the projects me and Bridget actually did together. This is Disco Bob. So...
We made a controller. He's on a servo, so he twists. And our idea was like an activity at like a library for when kids are bored, so they don't make bad decisions. They have something to play with.
So, their final project, they had to do their outdoor safety, which I think we're going to see from JAX video, community enhancement, which is Disco Bob there, or a personal or pet helper, which is the personal pet. So, they had to, they could choose from all three of the projects. And it kind of leads up to how do you take everything that you know and put it into kind of this final thing. So, this was their final project, Disco Bob.
We used microbits and we made a tinfoil switch, so...
And we made two different ones, so he could move in two different directions.
Yeah, and we used two microbits, so we could use Bluetooth between the controller and the Disco Bob. So, it was one of the more complicated projects. Also, we have a servo which like allows him to move, yeah.
We're going to see him move?
Yeah.
Awesome. Go Disco Bob.
I have to tell you that we took this apart in June of last year and put it on my shelf. So, the first time we found it. So, it's not necessary when the kids are using it. So, it's definitely something that they have to play with. And there is some frustration level. The microbits, there's a couple in the containers that the kids can pass around. The wires that they have to work with don't snap on. They really, they have to kind of play with it. They have to figure out how to make it, make it work correctly. We can debug that a little bit. But this was a pretty extensive project as far as taking servos, taking two different microbits, making them work one another. There's probably seven or eight different wires that are hooked up in there.
I just did that.
Let's turn your laptops back on.
Oh, you're trying to plug in the wrong one.
This is another thing is we have to get a power source for Disco Bob. And we do battery packs that we normally use, try moving it a little bit. And the kids would troubleshoot the battery packs because sometimes they would work, sometimes they wouldn't work. This is definitely part of the experience. I don't know if Mr. Lecliter wants to show a couple of the other projects, but the girls are working on this. We have a couple videos of the kids. In the end, one of the ways that they're assessed is they have to actually present their project to me. So, they do a video.
Is that you or your brother?
That's me.
Okay.
I don't know, you're identical. I can't tell you apart.
All right, so here we have our automatic cat feeder, right? So, how it works is you press a pressure sensor and then the servo spins. We tape on the wire so it doesn't get interfered with. And when it spins, give me a second one second. All right, so, when the servo spins, it'll hit the bottle cap off the table. And then the bottle cap will spin and land into the dish of plate. May not, because it's not like, it's like a rough draft kind of. And then, while that's going, it'll say, "Cat is fed", and then it'll send a signal to this. And then it'll say, "Enjoy", and play some music down there. Okay, hopefully it works. Bridgette and Violet, did you bring this in? All right, so, over here.
Hard to hear the music, but it's there.
It should be playing some music. All right, that's our product.
Awesome.
If we had a better servo, it probably could work a little bit.
So, did you train your cat to push the button?
Cause some issues with kids who do have...
Goodness, who is that kid?
Say you're a biker, say you're a biker and you're trying to get past the traffic and you can't see cars coming at you. And the headlights are coming right at you. If light goes on this microbit, a noise will play and two LED lights will flash. As you can tell, this would be a great device for any biker.
Takes after his mother.
Again, what a lot of us wish you'll see is that the students can really work to their own ability level. So, these students that are sitting in front of you decided that they just wanted to keep going. They took on more difficult tasks. They have multiple components that are in there. The joystick that they created was completely on their own. We want to make our own joystick. And we said, well, what do we know how to do well? Do we know how to do tinfoil switch? So, how can we make a tinfoil switch into it? So, there's a lot of thinking that goes on, which is really nice. Scott's project, again, they had to lay that thing out, tape it down, set it up, wire it every class. So, they would start the program, they would get it almost ready, and then I wouldn't get to grade it or everything wouldn't work. And so, there was a lot that went into planning that. And they would get one thing working and then they'd add something called incremental programming. They'd add something onto it. Yeah. There was a, if we go back just one slide, one thing that runs through both mine and Mr. Momney's class is this design process, defining a problem, generating concepts, designing a solution, building and testing, evaluating the solution, and then presenting the solution. So, kids really get to walk through all aspects of that. It isn't just can you code this and make it work? It's okay, now how do you relate that to and how do you present it? And I think they had fun making little commercials and things like that and working together in partners, which can be tough at times, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, and beneficial at times when they have someone to kind of sound bored off of. So, you could say, anything else that you guys want to add about microbits? Did you like them? Does anyone want to talk about what's on a microbit? And, because we didn't hit everything, but there's quite a bit on that little controller that the kids...
I'm assuming you grade on their effort, not whether their cat gets fed or...
What do you care about? Whether your project works or how hard you market it?
How hard you work at it. It was last year, I don't...
What did we do? Was that our last app? Did everybody get to 100? Did you have to meet certain targets?
You had to meet certain...
So, they're actually, they're graded on their ability technology-wise. So, the harder the project that they took on, the more opportunity they had to gain points. So, some of the projects that the kids did for this didn't get to 100. They didn't have multiple inputs. They didn't have multiple outputs. The kids who wanted to go for 100 had to use the higher level skills and more importance. Does that make sense? But everybody can be successful. Is that what we're saying? If you work hard at it, there's a threshold that everybody in the room?
Yeah, and usually it's like a better coder with a less experienced coder. So, if one person isn't really good at one thing, then the other person can pitch in and help with that one thing that other person isn't good at.
Yeah, I was in Mr. Momney's class the other day. They were, they were working on a problem-solving project. And one student had a solution. And then, I was in there, five minutes later, the other kid was the one with the solution. Like it was back and forth. I think the other powerful piece to this is, it's not about perfection. It's not about getting it right the first time. It's that process. And, and, you know, I heard failure a few times, you know, learning by, by failure. That's how we all learn. So, it, it's a really neat process to watch over the course of a semester, multiple years. Some of these guys have been... So, thank you very much.
Anything you guys want to share about your experience or...
It was fun. It was good.
You feel like you're learning?
Yeah.
Some of it was difficult, but it was good that it was challenging, because you wanted to try harder.
Are any of you looking at maybe future, being an engineer someday?
Hmm.
I know, I know, it's only, you're only in 7th grade.
I'm in an NFL position, but...
That doesn't pan out.
If that doesn't work.
That's something to fall back on.
It's a good fallback.
You said a lot of things today.
You're pretty good at this. You should go to my robotics team. No pressure.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
That was a question I was going to ask, is that how many, most of the robotics students come up out of your class?
I get a much bigger understanding of which kids have that focus and drive when they're sitting in front of me. So, it's hard for me when a 5th grader says, "I want to be a part of robotics. I love this." Sometimes they show up and what they really like to do is just build the libraries. They don't have that understanding. And I think that these kids, once they start coding with blocks and they realize that you can do one thing on a computer screen and have it have a direct effect to a physical thing, whether it's the microbits, whether it's an app, which Caitlin didn't, I don't even, they say big apps too, but, once they see that, that they're like, what I can do here is going to affect here. They make that connection with the robotics. And I think they're, they're really engaged in, and again, they take me places, I don't even know where we're going half the time. They're like, "I want to do this." And I'm like, "Okay." Or, "Can you add something else to your app?" And they're like, "All right, I made my app do this." And I'm like, "That's great, show me how you did that." So, it's, it's a really exciting and interesting environment for them to be in because, yeah, they just, they, it's, it's good. Most days, really good.
I don't think it's a coincidence that since we brought these units into the Tech Ed class and to some of the other arenas, that now we're seeing an explosion of growth for robotics.
And Tech Ed really leads off of my class. So, these kids and Caitlin, and Caitlin about robotics, they lead my class to be mostly block coding. And what they do with the VEX is really the next step. So, it's really a nice partnership with Mr. Momney. And again, we are so fortunate in this district. I cannot say it enough times, because there are a lot of middle schools that don't teach this. There are a lot of high schools in the state. The kids do not get exposed to what these kids are getting, a full year of not just in 6th grade, but 6th and 7th grade. So, we as a district, I think in the state, we're leading where these kids can go and kind of opening a lot of doors and possibilities. And kids who think they're going to the NFL can also realize that, hey, I'm pretty good at, at coding and, and making apps and creating things. So, that's a really big accomplishment for Litchfield as a school district.
I know it's kind of the wrong crowd. I, I mean, this question is kind of a high school question, but I think this is amazing, what we're, what we're doing in 6th and 7th grade. I worry though, what happens after they leave you? You know, I, because I want to, I want to ensure that these kids continue, if they want to, continue on this trajectory and, and have the resources available all the way up through. So, I, like I said, I mean, that's certainly something to keep in the back of our mind. I know that, I know that the computer science curriculum is, is kind of being tweaked and developed and... Absolutely.
What a great problem to have in Litchfield.
We're so awesome in 6th and 7th grade.
Would you like to take these classes in high school?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right? That want to do this. What a great problem to have as opposed to kids who are not interested and not engaged in this, this kind of discovery. So, yeah, every time I look at one of those problems, I think we're so lucky. That's the problem that we're dealing with in Litchfield.
The, the other neat thing is, these are not conventional classrooms. Both Robin and Eric's class, very unconventional. You walk in there, there's this stuff all over the place. So, it's, it's really, it's set up for, for this, which is...
Eric's classroom is bigger than mine. I'm a little jealous. He's got this nice big table. But all the kids I've walked by stand around and kids in the middle of, and you guys can speak to this. That whole climate in that room, when you're working with Mr. Momney, is really a neat and exciting environment. So, I'm a little jealous because I have a regular-sized classroom. But he has the space for the kids to really spread out and, and to feel like they are a part of the group discussion and really solving problems together as opposed to just sitting at desks. So, it is a unique opportunity that we have.
Can I just bring up for, I guess, Mike, Tom, and the other two principals, we made a pretty serious financial commitment to our learning labs last few years for fairly small money. You know, quality 3D printers now are down around 300, under $300. We have a few, but as Robin says, her, or as you said, her room's not a conventional classroom. I think we need to start pushing our other classrooms this way and have Learning Commons have that technology, two or three. You know, there's great things out there where kids can print Lincoln's hand from the Smithsonian, the famous hand holding the pen. And when you're doing presentations, things like that, getting those other classrooms, not just Tech Ed, not just computers, outside the classroom doing things. I think we do need to look at the Learning Commons to, they're, they're great, but expand on what else other classes.
Yeah, it's a good model for our learning, I think the Learning Commons has, has the 3D printers.
I will say my, my robotics kids, again, we'll speak to this, they, they pull in that skill. And so, whenever we go to a robotics competition, one of the things they'll do is they'll, they'll model it in 3D and they'll have it printed on the 3D printer. And again, we only have 3D printer for about 20 years.
And they're new.
Amy's a big part. Amy Prevensel, Prevensel, our Learning Commons specialist.
It is a great thing when these guys can take the classmate, doesn't necessarily have the interest and show them something to do. It's just, it's a, it's a great way to, to get everybody thinking.
Thank you guys. Great job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good to see him dance.
Yeah, he did move. You missed it.
He did, he did dance.
Disco Bob.
You gotta hit the computers on. It needs the power, Beth. I can't look at it. If they go to sleep.
It's starting.
In my lab, we have, you might need to unwind it.
The lights on.
There we go.
There we go.
So, here's, here's one more question.
We did.
I heard some mentions of if we had better servos and if we had, if we had. Do you have the resources that you need to continue this great work?
I'll be perfectly honest with you, there's more we could do. The kids, students are ready to do more. I probably need the time dedicated to do that, to do some research, to find better equipment for them to use. And then, the flexibility still. First, I think Mr. Lecliter and I talked about putting that into the budget a little bit. We started last year and kind of adding that so that as the program grows and develops, that there's at least something earmarked for it. And then we can start to look at how we can do that.
And how about robotics? How are we funded for robotics this year? I know, how many...
It's, we have a budget for, for that. We also get some support from other areas. Robin's actually been scouring for grants and we've had some support. I think I've talked about UNH had expressed some interest with some connections that Robin made. There's a business in, on a dairy that he's been supporting.
Yeah, there was a, the code review competition that we went to last year. I actually did a webinar for them at the end of Mustang School. And so, we, you know, talked, but just reaching out to the community, what else is out there? They're, they're really supportive. But yeah, it's, it's, there is, there is a little bit of need for money, not a ton. We've, we've been supported. Tom's made it a priority for us, which has been really good. I think Eric will speak to the same.
We're going to have three. Robin oversees the whole Lego Robotics program, but we're going to have two other coaches in addition this year. Four teams, at, at least four.
Yeah, we, we have four teams that are going to go into the fall competition. And then we have just pulled on Mr. Mom... And then we have just pulled on, Mr. Mommy is nice enough to join me in this wonderful endeavor. So he is actually gonna start reaching out to our fifth and sixth graders, so if that would be bad, Eric's gonna be as possible.
We've already told you.
Yeah. So in the next week, we're gonna get those kids started in Sep- in September, October, in a very informal way. They won't compete the fall. They'll compete again in the spring. So it's our hope to bring again four teams to the fall competition. And then bring up new teams to the spring competition. This is again, a whole after school program, not.
Right, this isn't.
His class.
Right.
Um, so again, opening that door for, because we have had parents and kids at the younger's age now that the elementary is doing. Stuff with the Lego robotics saying, oh, I want to get involved. I want to be a part of this. So again, taking advantage of Eric's big room. We're gonna set up another table in there, expose more kids to that, let them kind of look at the problem solving that goes along with that. And the problem this year, which is really exciting, we'll be back to see you. Do you remember what it is? Any more people in robotics? Yep, what's the problem? And developing plans to do it. So they may come back with a plan. On how they want to improve the space in Litchfield.
We have a, some, some schools that could need, you know, some ideas, right, Tom?
They're working on it.
You farmed it out, didn't you? Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Great job, guys.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're doing the ceremony, right?
Yeah, sure. Should I do that?
Hmm, those are quite the survey results we still look like.
Okay, so I'm gonna change channels now to promotion ceremony. Um, twenty twenty is actually the title of the slide here. So, um, go back in time a little bit. Some of you might recall, if you were at the spring ceremony, spring twenty nineteen ceremony. Uh, we're talking about the eighth grade promotion ceremony.
I blacked out. It was so hot.
Thank you.
Say that about every promotion ceremony has ever been, I think.
Yeah, so we, so the tradition has been that the eighth grade ceremony is held in the LMS gym. On the night before the last day of school. It's a, it's a seven o'clock ceremony, pretty much the same thing every year in the gym. And for those who haven't been to the ceremony, it's a mix of student speeches. Um, I do an address to the eighth grade, the band and chorus play, and then we present promotion certificates. And it usually runs about forty-five minutes to an hour. And, uh, it's usually one of the hottest days of June. And whether it's hot or not outside, it's always hot inside during the ceremony. So this past spring, the ceremony was very, very warm, very uncomfortable. Um, and acoustics were not good. And as you all know, if you've been to LMS for an event, the parking was a challenge. So we are trying to reboot a little bit for next year, um, quite a bit actually. And, um, at the end of the school year, um, in talking with Dr. Jetty, decided the best idea was to go right out to our parent. Community, the eighth grade parents at the time, who had just lived through the ceremony. And so what used. I use my words carefully. So the overview is after the LMS ceremony in spring twenty nineteen, we surveyed parents for feedback on the potential location of future ceremonies. And as I said, we faced some challenges last spring. So the survey results are in this document and a couple of things. The pie graph shows you the four options that were presented with the results of the, um, of the survey. The second page gives you the comments, which you'll probably find very interesting. The comments are more or less what you would expect, feedback on the lack of parking, on the, the heat. And then just sort of how to move forward with the ceremony. And the four options that were, that were on the table for the ceremony, uh, were one, the LMS gym. The CHS gym, the CHS auditorium, or the CHS field. With each one of those comes pros and cons. And so we weighed this all out over the summer and certainly can ask, answer questions on any of those four options. But the survey yielded the most popular results being the CHS gym and the CHS, CHS auditorium. And I will tell you, we had about fifty responses to the survey. So forty.
Parents?
It's about half, yeah. So forty-two percent versus thirty-four percent is actually, the delta between those two is not a huge number. And then we looked at what our reality is for this coming year. And so under action steps, I have a number of bullets to just sort of frame where we're going, what we're hoping to do this coming spring. And the first thing is if we have the ceremony in the auditorium, a nighttime ceremony. Um, we're gonna expect a big crowd. I would say on the order of somewhere around six hundred. We tried to do a head count. It was not easy. I think I was in heat exhaustion mode too, as I was trying to count heads. But, um, more or less, I would say around six hundred. And so, um, if we tried to do, we have a hundred and fifteen in this year's eighth grade class. If we tried to have that in the auditorium, we would have to limit the number of, uh, tickets to three per family. So, you know, I have a family of five. That would mean one of my own children would not be able to come to the ceremony. So, um, we feel that the, yeah, there's the advantage of air conditioning in the auditorium. But there probably would not be enough room for the band to play. Uh, the chorus could sing, the kids could be up on the stage. But we would be limited in seating. And additionally, we have staff that come. We have other community members that may not specifically have kids. But limiting tickets would be a challenge with this class size this year. So, um, our recommendation is to put it in the, in the CHS gym. Uh, the ceremony in the CHS gym, which has more seating, more bleacher seating. Uh, Campbell High School has more parking. I think the ventilation is gonna be better in a bigger space. We will have to have a rehearsal before the, the ceremony. Typically, we have two rehearsals. We can do one of those makeshift in our own gym and then another one in the CHS gym. Um, you know, I think that'll, that'll be fine. And then the ceremony would still be on the evening of the last day of school, whenever that may fall, depending on snow days and, and scheduling between now and then. So that's the summary and we're gonna move forward unless there's any major concerns.
I'm surprised more people didn't want it outside.
What's that?
I'm surprised more people did not want it outside.
Yeah, I think with that, it's.
We'd have to rent chairs.
And I, and I know we do the CHS graduation outside, but I think it's, well, yeah, maybe some of that. But I, I, I think it's just the weather is always a risky thing. And I know that's no difference between LMS and CHS.
The first time we go outside for LMS, it'll rain. And the other time it's ninety-five degrees outside.
It will rain if we have ours outside.
But they have fans in the, you don't even have fans in your gym. So it would be cooler and there is better air. We had thousands of people in there for a wrestling tournament.
Yeah. And I don't think it's. I've been in there for the Campbell graduations that we've had to have inside. And I don't, I don't think we're gonna draw the numbers that Campbell graduation would draw. We're certainly gonna have. We will need to rent chairs still, even in the, even in the Campbell gym to seat six hundred roughly, but, um.
I think the saddest part is I couldn't hear any of the kids speak. Like I couldn't hear any of the speeches and I was in the second, or first or second row.
I was on the stage and I couldn't hear.
Yeah, there was, I don't know what it was. It was.
Well, the dude speaks softly.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's unfortunate they can't have it at LMS, but it's just not conducive.
Yeah.
And I, I, I'll tell you, I'll throw something out there for food to thought, because I swung into LMS, um, open house. I was on the big yellow bus coming back from soccer game and we swung in. It was worse than graduation.
Of the open house parking?
Yeah, it was worse. Yeah, like the bus driver, as soon as she swung in, like, ooh, boy.
So can I talk about open house for a minute, L, LMS? So, um, as you probably know, I put a survey out regarding open house. And we asked two questions. Was, was it informative? And did it meet your expectations? And then a comment space. And, um, for that, we, I'm not sure what the tally's up to. We have a lot of, a lot of people taking the survey. Overwhelmingly, ninety-nine point nine 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 percent are fours and fives, you know, very positive about the night. But the comments are definitely about the parking. So, um, we're looking at potentially a two-night open house next year. Uh, the challenge has always been some of the staff that cover both grades and, and how to split that out. But that's not a problem we can't solve. So, um, I think like GMS has, I think they have two nights.
Don't they have nights they have to, they have to do at least an evening commitment?
Yeah, we'll work through how, how that's uncovered. But, um, in terms of the program, how we run open house with, with the student schedule, which we received a lot of positive feedback on that actually in our survey. It seems like that's the best option. Um, so.
Thrilled to see that you're using polls and surveys. I mean, I, I don't think I'm, I think those are, that was like the first one I took. The, of the open house.
Yeah, yeah.
In our school system. I do, they're important.
Yeah, and it was a quick turnaround, so we got that immediate feedback. It's also very easy with the Google forums and put the link out, so.
Could you stagger grades?
What's that?
Like, like let's say, night one, you do fifth grade and like an hour later you do a sixth grade.
It's like church. There's always leftover people that are still congregated in that.
I'm surprised.
We couldn't do that.
There's a traffic coming up and down the hallway. If you've got people coming in and people leaving.
That's my next thing. Is going to the town and having posts on one side of the road?
It'll be parked on Charles Bancroft Highway.
I mean, I think we need, we definitely need a second egress from the school anyway. So I think that is a capital improvement that needs to happen sooner rather than later. I, I, that really concerns me of having one, one way in and one way out.
Well, that, that was in the, um, um, one of those studies we had done.
They could go through the high tension wire.
It was a, it was, it's always been a recommendation.
Was it in the needs assessment?
It was in the.
Homeland security.
Drawn a blank on the.
Yeah, I think it was.
I, I can't think of it, but I, I have, I still have that report and mentions, mentions that.
If you can look at, and I think it would work out well if you could stagger it from fifth grade and, you know, the next time set sixth grade. But I think the town also had a lot of posters, parking on one side of that street.
Yeah.
Because I'm telling you, if someone else was coming, we would have stopped halfway. Someone had to back up.
Yeah.
And I worry about a fire truck or ambulance. You know, somebody's trying to get in, in an emergency on a night like that, so it's very tight.
Yeah, but the surveys have been, have been great. Even today, we did our Alice, um, Alice drill. And Martha's, Martha Thayer, our assistant's working on a survey to the staff. So we're doing the same thing with staff.
Tom, can you just briefly touch on the Alice drill in terms of, did you get feedback from people? I mean, the email went out. I'm sure everybody on the board saw. Did you get any feedback?
Yeah, so, um, just to review, what we did today with, um, Alice is, is, um. Our emergency protocols and safety protocols. We went through a few scenarios where, um, Ms. Thayer made, she would announce the scenario. Students were in their class. They'd have ten minutes to discuss how they would respond to the scenario. And then we gave another scenario. And it was more or less a sequential three scenarios. And, um, yeah, and I had observed it at Auburn when they, when they did it. Um, it went really, really well. I have to commend the staff.
The kids are savvy.
It's a really tough thing to talk about. It's our reality now, but it's a really tough thing and it's a, it's a high stress thing for staff. They obviously want to make sure they get it right and kids are asking questions and who knows what questions are gonna come up and. Um, but we felt that the scenarios really, it gave everyone an opportunity to talk. There's not one way to do it.
Right.
You know, it's a very fluid thing. And I think when we were training Alice, it was about empowerment, that we are empowered to. It's not a sequential list. It's options that you have. And so I think the staff feedback was, it was, it was really, it was neat to hear the kids generating a lot of the solutions and the ideas. And, um, the nice thing about the video that we showed the other day was, um, it was very tasteful for kids. It wasn't, uh, traumatic and, you know, there were no kids like running out of the classrooms that were, you know, this is, I can't watch it. Um, it was done very tastefully and the conversations, I think, were, were tasteful and well.
My son actually brought it up. He's a freshman and he was talking about one of those scenarios with someone holding a gun. And an eleven kids got on the kid. And I said, what was that called? And he said, that was C for counter. So he, and then I quizzed him on all the other letters because we were stuck in the car. But he knew what inform, alert, lockdown, evacuation, and of course I said, just get out if you're safe.
That's helpful. We, um, I mean, our strategy right now is to communicate as much as we can. So the video links were shared with the entire, uh, the parent community, so everybody could see what the videos were. The scenarios have been shared. Um, our next drill is gonna be a live drill on October seventh. We told the community about that. Um, and basically the, the drills on that day will be live drills. Students will be expected to respond. So they're gonna take what they learned today and actually respond. But we're not going overboard with an actor. There's nobody running around pretending to be an intruder. In fact, we're just gonna announce it and then have students respond as if that was what was occurring. So, you know, we're trying to be non-scary about it, but at the same time, at least have students think their way through, what would you do? So that's, that's helpful to hear it went well. I, uh, I had the whole SAU staff participate at the high school because I said, we're part of the building. We need to be involved also. And we spent probably thirty-five minutes just talking our way through. If I was here, how would I handle that, et cetera. So I mean, it's really important that we at least have those conversations. And, uh, I haven't heard from GMS yet, but I'm sure it went well also.
When we had scheduled it was, um, this year, we don't have a separate homeroom, so it was first, first period. And we gave about ten minutes to process each scenario. And so there were about fifteen minutes at the end of the whole thing. We went on the, on the intercom, made the announcement that it concludes the drill. Well, the classes were still, still debriefing even after that. So, um, it was just neat to see. And the teachers had some, some time there to, to spend more time.
Well, it's not great that we have to do it, but I'm glad the kids have other options than sitting ducks just locked down.
They handled it. They were very, very mature about it.
That's great.
I, I put it in the opening line of the email to parents. I dislike that we have to do this. I absolutely am, you know. Can't stand the fact that this is what it's come to, but it has come to this. So I'd rather we at least drill and practice and talk. Um, and, and keep hoping that it doesn't happen here.
Yeah.
Uh, just a quick reminder to the board that with the new format, with one principal coming each meeting, you have the link to the, uh, principals reports. Those are the same reports you had at the start of the month. And that's what we'll do each month. We'll just post them there. So if you had a follow-up question, you could certainly ask when the principals were here.
Did you want me to clarify enrollment or?
Uh, can you clarify that point? So, yeah, I think that's really important that everybody here.
I wanted to, in the report, there was a four, um, a table embedded about half. Yeah, it's page four, if you're following on the digital report.
I am.
Um, on LMS enrollment. And so Dr. Jetty and I have talked a little bit about sort of what, what these numbers mean. And these are our actuals as of eight thirty. And I can tell you, as of this report, we already have two more students. Four more, excuse me. We're up to three ninety-nine, which is, so. The reason that number is really important, three ninety-nine, our enrollment last year was higher than three ninety-nine. We had a large eighth grade class that graduated and we had a smaller fifth grade class that came in. The projection a year ago was that our total enrollment as of October, so we've still got a month, but would be three seventy-eight. So we're at a one-year projection. So we're at three ninety-nine and the projection a year ago was three seventy-eight. So we're twenty-one students above where we were expected to be as of October, which we'll get an October count soon. But just to give you an idea, we had many, as many as I can ever remember, um, registrations this summer. And very few withdrawals. So our net increase is significant. And we even just enrolled a student yesterday. So.
Wasn't there a grade that was really low, like in the eighties?
So, um.
Seventh grade.
Seventh grade was like crazy low. Like justifying a fifth teacher was hard.
Yeah, so the break, the breakdown as of the last I had it was, and this is different even than what you're seeing, was ninety-four in fifth, ninety-six in six. Ninety-five in seven, and we're up to one fourteen in grade eight, which is what you have. Um, but that is significant, particularly significant since those numbers, since this, these same kids were GMS. Those numbers really came up over the, over the years. So.
And, and Tom, can you speak to the, you've written, we have twenty-five new students. What do you mean by twenty-five new?
And that's, that's changed as well. But in other words, we, those are the numbers of kids that we register. But in other words, we, those are the numbers of kids that we registered, new students to LMS this summer.
Not counting the rising fifth graders, right? I mean, you're saying these are walk-in new students.
Those new students registering into the district, into our school, that triggers higher numbers than what we expected.
That's crazy.
Okay, so we didn't expect we were going to have this many new students. I can remember a few years, two, three years ago, we had sixteen new students register and that was unusual. We usually have four or five, maybe six.
So these are, these are, I mean, basically, it's new families moving into town and registering.
New families moving to town, as students coming in from charter schools, students coming in from homeschool. It's a gamut of, of.
How many students have you had that left?
Four.
Only four?
Yeah. As of today.
Twenty-one over your projection. That's, wow, that's a classroom.
Three seventy-eight to three ninety.
Well, I think three seventy-eight was projection.
Yeah.
Projected, but.
But what did you have, right, it's not necessarily what you had last year. So if you have twenty-five new, but if your class.
I think we're at four oh six last year. By the end of the year, I'm pretty sure we're at four oh six.
But the, the ninth grade class is one something, isn't it, over a hundred?
Yeah, they're one nineteen, they were, they're one nineteen when they left.
Yeah, the smaller classes are now in six and seven.
Those aren't that small.
They're not that small anymore.
They were small last year.
We're pushing a hundred in grade six, so.
It's interesting to me because I, you know, we expected to see a big, a big jump in enrollment at the, at the elementary school. Typically, that doesn't happen in the middle school. Typically, we know what we're getting by that point. So that's very interesting.
Yeah.
Excellent, thank you, Tom. Appreciate it, and thanks for bringing the students tonight. That's helpful for, I think, the board to see, yeah.
Is the homeroom change going?
So we were losing instructional time by having students go to homeroom and then go to first period. There was another switch, change, passing time during the day. So when kids come in now, they go to their lockers, they go to the first period. And they don't have to switch again, so they're in their first period. We do our morning exercises during the beginning of first period, but we're finding a significant difference in just the flow of the day, starting the day. It's just, it sounds like a small thing, but it really has made a big difference. I, I had a teacher who's been teaching at our school for many, many years come up to me. I cannot believe the difference in, it's, it's just funny things. Like the beginning of the day is just a really significant time for kids. You know, kids come in sometimes with whatever they come in with. And just not having to remember to switch twice, it just makes a, a big difference.
That's awesome.
And in addition to gaining instructional time, because we don't, we don't have the passing time in there.
So how much total instructional time are they gaining per day? It's not the entire homeroom.
Well, we were, we were going into homeroom at seven thirty-seven and then they would stay in there until seven forty-five and then they would go to their first-period class, give or take a minute, because we don't have a bell. But, you know, you figure two or three minutes of passing time there. And now I start the, our student council kids aren't doing the announcements yet. I start the announcements as soon as the buses are all there, walk in, the kids are in their home room. So we're done by seven forty, seven forty-one, so we're gaining six, seven minutes.
And while the kids are sitting there, because I have been with the first time this year, they can log on, they can walk somewhere, and they can get things ready. So even while Tom is making the announcement.
They're still busy times.
They're, they're still.
They're getting ready for class.
But the minute that he stops, we're ready to start, which is more probably like five or six minutes.
Yeah, moving right into instruction.
Time that I do for instruction, because the kids are there and ready. They've got their book open or you can hand them up, here, start reading this, that type of thing. So they're kind of prepped and ready for the day a little bit earlier than.
Wow. That's a good point.
Yeah.
Good.
Thanks, Tom, appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
All right. Next, we have the Historic Society. Would like to present to us, not sure who wants to come up.
Thank you for coming, by the way. We had a lot of questions.
Yeah.
You're, you're welcome.
I'll watch it on YouTube.
I'll see you tomorrow morning.
Thank you.
Did you copy that MOU?
Thank you.
I have it online.
Selectmen's meeting.
That's right.
That's our, I'll share.
Were you there? Yeah.
I want to just share paperback with you also, when you get a sec. Did you get the proposed MOU? Okay, take that with you. I apologize. So hang on to that, we'll go through it and we'll talk about it tonight. I just want to make sure you had that, because I wasn't sure if it was going to come through. Please, pass it right around, yep.
So before you do begin, I'd just like to publicly, because Liz and I did, like a week or so ago, we met you outside and apologized for the miscommunication as far as the meeting. Liz and I both missed the meeting, we got here at like a minute of seven.
We came from Deering, I came from Summersworth, and we got here at seven.
Come to find out, the meeting was at six-thirty.
And we found out about the meeting, you provided us through the day off. I didn't know if I could pull this together in, you know, two or three hours, so that's fine, it, it happens. Let me just get everything set up for myself here.
So the information to pass out to the board, it's seen several times, I see enough.
Yeah, except for the last page I did add today.
So I think everyone's well versed on the information.
Okay. Good. If this goes very brief.
Yeah, so if, if you want to just like, give us a synopsis of what it is you want to do and why you want to do it. And actually, for you young ladies at Table Eight Twenty, introduce yourselves, that way the people at home will know who you are.
Okay. I just, my name is Dr. Kimberly Queenen. I live on Two Newstead Street. I'm a member of the Litchfield Historical Society and acting secretary.
I'm Heidi Miller. I live at True Grove Court, Litchfield. I'm a member of the Historical Society. I'm also a native to Litchfield. And I taught art education at the school, for the school district for thirty-five years.
I'm Gail Barringer. I live at three ninety-eight Charles Bancroft Highway. I'm used to speaking with the Board of Education because for twenty-six years, I was the Director of Special Ed in Nashua for this school system. So it's pleasant for me to be back with board members and we're grateful tonight to be able to speak with you.
Before they keep moving on, can you pick it up if their mic just stays in the middle?
Yep.
Okay. So you just keep it in the middle, they'll be able to think.
Sure.
I'm sure there's like noises like going all over the place.
I just want to say one quick thing, it's the segue. We, we just saw the children with the STEAM program and it was just so wonderful to see. I want you to understand that even though we're Historical Society and we do like old things, a lot of us like modern art and work in high-tech. So I want, want you to think we just want to stay old. We enjoy old and new, okay? All right. If you, have you all, you all have pretty much seen this, okay? You have the title, the Board of Selectmen meeting September ninth, because they forwarded you this information, so I didn't want to change the sheet. It's about ninety percent of what we're going over tonight. The Historical Society informed the Board of Selectmen that we'll be requesting owner permission to allow the following five buildings in Litchfield to be considered for the Historic Register. The five buildings are listed here that you're already aware of. These buildings were selected since they represented the old center of town of Litchfield. When we went to the Board of Selectmen on August twenty-sixth, we believed that the first four buildings were owned by the town of Litchfield. And we told them we'd be approaching the Presbyterian to get permission for the Presbyterian Church. At that meeting, you know, we went over this document. What was not clear was who actually owned the school. So we had to go back, that was August twenty-sixth, and went back on the ninth after doing research to find out who actually owned the school. What we found is, I'll tell you that in one second, but before, before, we have to go to step, I want you to go to step, the next bullet under it first, and I'll tell you what we found of, obviously, is why we're here. But when we decided to approach putting these buildings on to the register, we went up to Concord to the state and they told us the procedure to do this. They said, number one is to fill out the applications in your packet. You did, I don't know if you all saw the school application that we filled out. We thought that would take two weekends, it took two years to go all five buildings done, okay? Once we were done in the two years working back and forth with the state, they, they do a preliminary review. That is, they look at it obviously with the historians, but they also want to make sure it has a chance of passing. Once they did that, they said, now here's a form, go to the owners and ask them for sign-off to see if they want to do step forward, just final review, to put it on to the register itself. Even if you get passed, so if you approved it and it gets into final state review and they actually approve that it's fine, it is still no guarantee that you will get on to the Historic Register. Okay? So it would stay in Concord in the filing cabinet, but there might be another chance later to go on. So when we go back up to part one is what we found out. We worked with Troy Brown in the legal department, we reached out to them, we worked with the tax people, we worked with the Historical Society, we did deed research. We found out that in nineteen fifty-seven, the town of Litchfield sold that school to the Litchfield School District. So that is why we now are approaching you, the school board, because you have authority over the building. This, the, the New Hampshire State Register Historical Places doesn't just put buildings on to that, you can also put bridges and any kind of artifact, okay? We just happen to be doing buildings. Why you would like to be on it, it does preserve our culture and heritage. It honors the buildings and brings positive attention to Litchfield. If you are selected, the status is honorary only. There are no restrictions or requirements on the property. There's a handout I gave you in your packet, the second one, white piece of paper. In there, it looks like this, I put in right here, to make it very clear to all of you, and I will give you a copy. Owners of the property listed on the state register are free to maintain, manage, dispose of their property as they choose. So if you read everything in this box down here. Owners of the property listed get free to maintain, manage, or dispose of their properties they choose without oversight or comment of the state. However, as property owners plan for needed maintenance or changes, staff members are always available to ask questions. What that means is, you can make changes, you can enhance anything in the building. If you make changes, you may reach out to the state, you may decide you don't want to reach out to the state. They're there if you want them. You can sell your building and you can demolish your building, okay? If you're on the register, town buildings would be eligible for moose plate funds. Although you are not a town-owned building, the moose plate funds does impact you because they handle the administrative costs for the L-Chip Fund, which is underneath of this. The L-Chip Fund is a land and community heritage investment program. So let me go back a step, anybody, let's go to the moose plate funds. Anytime you buy a moose conservation plate, there's a fee that they take and they put that into a fund and that's where that money comes from. What the L-Chip Fund is, is a real estate transaction fee. So if you ever look at, you know, when you sell a house, the seller and the buyer have a little L-Chip line item. It's like a twenty-five dollar fee. It goes into that fund. So your, the, the school building would, would fall into the, all buildings would qualify for L-Chip. However, the moose chip funds, like I said, is the administrative cost for the L-Chip. You could, if you want, work with the town for matching funds. If you are selected, you, you would have a press release. The buildings would be placed onto the statewide computer system and they both help promote tourism. Buildings are sometimes provided leniency with building code requirements. I want to go to, if you go to the back of that page I handed out, section three, if you want to read that. It would say, the property are, what that means is, the building would be offered special consideration in the application of the Americans with Disabilities Act, building energy, building energy and fire codes and the state-led poisoning prevention law and administrative rules. You'd also have some leniency with floodplain ordinances. This handout is what the state gave us. We were trying to build a case for you to say what was so, you know, why it should be there and we, we really thought something was missing. We wanted to stop and reflect on what we have here. Yes, the buildings can be documented and even placed onto the New Hampshire State Historic Register. However, more importantly, these buildings are extensions of the people who built and utilized them at their specific times in history. These buildings are what is left from those who have come before us. The eighteen forty-four Litchfield Presbyterian Church still continues to represent spiritual leadership and community service. The eighteen fifty-one Old Litchfield Town Hall represented our community's governing body. Today, it still continues to serve as a meeting place for the Litchfield Historical Society. The nineteen twenty-four Aaron Cutler Memorial Library and the nineteen thirty Litchfield Grammar School both continue to represent our community's values regarding education, learning, and the pursuit of knowledge. And the nineteen fifty-eight Old Litchfield Fire Station represented a community coming together to keep its citizens safe. Whether these buildings make it on to the New Hampshire State Register or not, each needed to be documented, for it honors the buildings, the people, and the community they have served and continue to serve today. What we realized what was missing from this document, and we should talk to the state, is they weren't mentioning the people. So we needed to bring that to you. What we told the board on the ninth was, we wanted them to make a decision, if they could, for the approval of the eighteen fifty-one, the town hall, the library, and the fire station, we told them we'd still be approaching the Presbyterian Church and that we would now approach you about the grammar school. So you had that in your handout and now we have a current state of where we are today. The Litchfield Historical Society will be requesting owner permission to allow the nineteen thirty Litchfield Grammar School, today known as the Griffin Memorial School, to be considered for registration on the New Hampshire State Register of Historic Places. This matrix in the middle shows the five buildings. Who owns the building? Who we would get approval from? Step, I think it was step two preliminary state review, was done on all five documents on August twenty-eighth. They had the paperwork August third, but they went and had it done on the twenty-eighth. Their response to all five buildings were they, yes, they were eligible for listing on to the register. If I look at the school one itself, I'll read you their one-sentence feedback about the school. They said about, that's the grammar school. It said, Litchfield Grammar School was originally constructed in nineteen thirty with several major additions over time, including mid-late nineteen fifties, nineteen sixty-eight, nineteen seventy-four, and nineteen eighty-eight. The structure is eligible for listing over the, on the state register for its association with local history and its physical example of changing educational philosophies and practices as shown through its architecture, design, and expansions over time. So we obviously spent two years because we saw some historic value in it. They're telling you they see historic value in it. As of today, the final item on this matrix is, on September ninth, the Litchfield Board of Selectmen approved the eighteen fifty-one Litchfield Town Hall, the nineteen twenty-four Aaron Cutler Memorial Library, and the nineteen fifty-eight Litchfield Fire Station to go to step four, final review. We will be meeting with the Litchfield Presbyterian Church, the Presbyterian, on Monday. We expect that we'll be fine. And we are here today about the school board. So just to recap, the upside of being on the register is honorary title only. There are no restrictions on the property, you can add, enhance, change, sell, demolish. You do not lose any of your managing control of the building. It helps preserve an asset we already have. The L-Chip dollars could help relieve the taxpayers of Litchfield for that school and owners can work with the towns for matching funds. The building would be given special consideration, leniency of relief in the application, access, building of safety codes. And I listed again ADA, building and energy and all that. I do have one, another relative input is Mrs. Gail Barringer here. Has a connection to the Litchfield Grammar School and would like to share her thoughts.
Thank you. My basic connection, as I attended the school, one of the two main schoolhouse beginning in nineteen forty-two, Lauren Center, the librarian and first through fourth grade teacher was my teacher. And I believe for the misses with us, Carolyn, it's back there, Dr. Calloway, and Heidi and I all went to the Litchfield School.
And Mary.
Yes, sorry. We talked about personal connections to the building and I would like to share with you that tonight I appeared before you, not just as a member of the Litchfield Historical Society and the historic building. Historical Society and the Historic Building Team, but also as a Griffin heir. My grandmother, Martha Griffin Cole, thought she could help the school district retain land to expand the Litchfield Griffin, it was called the Litchfield Grammar School. And she appealed to her cousin, Grace Paul Johnson, that had been in Massachusetts, but formerly Litchfield. She asked her cousin if she would donate the tract of land, Grace and Martha Griffin Herb and Paul, to the school district. Grace Johnson Paul's stipulations were that Martha Griffin Cole ensured, yet there were no other heirs who much wanted to make my contribution.
No, go ahead.
And that the Litchfield Grammar School be renamed the Griffin Memorial School. The transaction took place on September 1st, 1971. As we've indicated in our presentation handout, the Griffin Memorial School, as is the Aaron Cutler Library, the original fire station, the Old Town Hall, and the Litchfield Presbyterian Church are all representations of the effort residents down over the generations made to provide services to the Litchfield citizens. These citizens came together to build these structures. These buildings are our civic history. It's our responsibility to honor and, if possible, preserve them. Tonight, I speak on behalf of all the Griffin heirs, and there are many of them, and appeal to you as the Board of Education to approve our proposal to the New Hampshire Division of Historic Resources to name the Griffin Memorial School to the state historic register. Thank you.
I also have something to share. It's important for a community to say they can conserve and protect historic buildings that have been a part of the town's history. It allows towns like Litchfield to preserve the rural character of its community. The 1930s brick two-room school building is part of the character of our town. It is a visual landmark along the scenic Charles Bancroft Highway, along with our farms, old homes, and other historic buildings. It's served our town well, and many generations of families over the years were educated in that building. Many of our present town residents attended this school and have fond memories of their school days with classmates. The school building was once the hub of town activities. Throughout the years, many school and town events were held there. Many communities across our state are actively saving and preserving their older buildings because they have a connection with the town's past. Sometimes, these old buildings no longer support their original purpose, but can be saved or repurposed for other functions. Hudson's Fire Marshal and our Building Inspector, Kevin Lynch, and Civil Engineer, Michael Granger, deemed the building structurally safe a few years ago. It would be a shame not to keep and preserve this building. We must remember, once a historic building is gone, it is gone forever, and that piece of history is lost. I personally have a soft spot in my heart for GMS, including the 1930s building. My grandmother was an elocution teacher. My mother, school nurse for 20 years. My father farmed in summer and worked as a custodian in winter. My sixth, seventh, and eighth-grade classes were in the 1930s building. I've spent more years inside the walls of GMS than any other place in my life. Eight years as a student, 35 years as an art educator, and I've been back subbing since my retirement in 2016. Thanks for your time and consideration, and hope you will approve our proposal for the Griffin Memorial School to be added to the state historic register, the 1930s building. Thank you.
So first question I have is for clarification. You're referring to GMS, and you referred to the 30s building. Is it only the 30s building that's going on the Historical Society's list?
That's correct.
Because it's like, lists like different places both.
The whole building would be, even though that piece is the historic part of the building, they count the whole building. So you would be eligible for any maintenance.
L-Chip would be available for the whole business building because it's connected.
Now, if you want to enhance this building, you can, but if you want to change other parts of the building.
And there are no restrictions to enhancement?
And if you want their advice, they're there to help you, and if you don't, you can do what you want.
So if you can just refresh my memory from, I believe it was the last election, the Historical Society was trying to push a few warrants as far as what they could do with buildings or what you couldn't do with buildings. Does this fall in the same category or not, or?
Are you talking about the last deliberative, or are you talking way back when there was the Historic?
Last deliberative, I'm sorry.
The last deliberative. Do you want to speak to that? Okay, yeah. You're talking about the demolition ordinance. Yeah. That did pass. So what would happen, I didn't bring that with me, but what would happen? Town buildings are exempt from that because the board can do what they want. You would have to go through that. So the building's over 50 years old. It's greater than 500 square feet. So it would automatically come to the Heritage Commission. We can't stop you from doing anything. We just put a pause on it just to see if anybody would be interested in buying it, moving it, selling it, to state their piece. You don't even have to attend the meeting if you don't want to. It's just a way to hear people out. And after 30 days, you know, be like, is this the time for to post it in the paper, you know, the two cycles we have to do that? You can still get your demolition permit or change permit, whatever.
But it still would put a waiting period on?
That's anybody. If it's not a town building, it would do that.
If it's on the historical list or just?
Just period.
Anything over 50 years.
Yeah, 50 years and 500 square feet. So you could still demolish it.
So that is currently in place in town, right?
Yes, currently large.
Yeah.
Okay.
And what it does also is it allows documentation of the building. If the building is determined that it's going to be demolished, then the Historical Society has the right to have the building photographed on the interior and exterior to preserve knowledge of what it's like.
If you give us permission.
I think that's.
You don't have to.
No, I mean, speaking for myself, I think there is a lot of history in that building, and I think there's a lot of heart and a lot of connection to that building. And I think that's a perfectly reasonable, you know, stop along the way, if we do come to demolishing. I think it's no secret that, you know, the need for some sort of an elementary school or a new facility has been presented and turned out and keep, you know, as we're working on our capital plan, I think that's certainly, you know, a consideration. But at the same time, I absolutely appreciate, you know, the history of that building and how much it means to our town.
I appreciate, oh, sorry. I appreciate the fact that there might be funds available to help with, you know, building, if we're going to upgrade some things on both. The one thing that I just, that concerns me is for our youngest students in Litchfield to, I wouldn't want any special consideration or relief to downgrade any fire codes or energy. That's like my biggest question about this.
It wouldn't downgrade them.
No, but it's a special consideration or relief of ADA, building, energy, or fire codes. So what does that really, what does that really mean?
You're in a different situation where you are connected to a school building that's being used. For example, the Historical Society building. We do not meet ADA codes, and we don't have to according to state law. It's going to hold different category. You people are a separate sort of thing because you have children there and so forth, and there is no reason for you to downgrade any of this. That'd be your option. You're not going to be downgraded because you're on the state register. So that if you decided to use the building for some reason, you're going to come up to ADA standards, for example, on handicap accessibility, they would be allowed to.
That makes sense.
If we.
Yeah, that makes sense.
On an elevator list, kind of would ruin the whole look. I get it.
A lower standard.
Not at all. But if there was a reason you couldn't, they would give you some, you still have to pass.
They would give you consideration.
One clarifying question. I don't know if there's an answer to this. Say we did apply for and get a grant of some type somewhere down the road, does that change the status of the building? Can we then not do what we want with it? Is there any change to status? So if we do, if we were to get a grant for something, it doesn't change the?
If you need to keep the school on for a few years.
If for some reason down the road, the school board wished to withdraw from the register, virtually no one ever withdraws from the register because it's the upside of it. But it is allowable. Strictly an honorary.
The state's telling me that a lot of towns are running to this for the funding, for the help.
Really?
And the Historical Society itself has received a $6,500 grant that we had restoration work done on our works and our collection.
Congrats.
Glad I bought a moose plate last time.
I may have to change mine to a moose plate.
I know.
Well, so the concern the board has, or blocking is, let's say 10 years down the road, all of a sudden we want to do something, and then you turn and say, well, this has been on the historical list for 10 years now, and you really should, you know, tear the building down. And that's really the concern. So what's the difference, or you know, the process of a historical building you can't destroy?
That's the National Historic Register, which this is not at all part of. That's on the national level. It would probably cost $5,000 to $6,000 to nominate that building for the register. Historical Society can't afford that. The state registry is free, and as we said, it's just on, we can't impose restrictions on anyone. The National Register does have that.
But it might enable us, I mean, you know, there's no, there are no funds for demolishing and rebuilding. But if we were to do something like they did in Concord, where they, you know, restored a portion of the building or used it in another location or something like that, then?
That registered that.
Did they, yeah.
Restored one of their early school buildings. And it's now being used by the Historical Society. The town wanted to preserve it, but they didn't quite know for what.
Right, right.
And so they have allowed the Historical Society to be there just to have someone in the building.
Yeah. Well, it might be a solution to.
Sorry.
What's that?
I said, I love that.
I do, too. I do, too. I think that's great. It's a good.
What was the historic, I'm totally off topic. What was the building that your Historical Society is in? Did that building have any significance to town?
To the fire station, yes. To the Old Town Hall.
Oh, I didn't know.
Dr. Calloway?
I was floored when he told me about what the upstairs was and what's in the basement for that.
Yes, the upstairs of the Old Town Hall was a ballroom where town meetings were held. It's still intact under a fault ceiling. There's a vaulted tin ceiling. We have the original chandelier and side lights and furniture from the room. So someday, we hope to open that all up again into a ballroom.
I thought that would be cool.
Do our students, I know that we do Litchfield History in third or sixth grade.
They don't go. They made a path for them to get there.
I was just going to ask. That's the perfect field trip. And do we take advantage of that?
Students who study New Hampshire History, which is the fourth grade.
Yeah, I think so.
Used to come up, and they would do a day trip. They'd walk up the path, see what was going on in the building. They'd have a member or two there explaining everything to them. The kids had a great time, and then for some reason, it just ended. And although we sent invitations, no one ever came again.
Dr. Jettie, I would like to point out, I'm going to bring this up after. I talked to Dr. Calloway, I'm sorry, Callow. Just, we have these senior, junior, sophomore, and senior projects, and there's so much opportunity over there. And I don't, you know, a lot of.
We have students, too. The senior projects in the high school have been done there.
But like, a lot of the display items are handwritten. I mean, if we get technology over there and get some of our kids to go through and help out and volunteer, there's just a lot of opportunities there, and such a great little building.
I think it's such a great resource. I haven't been there. I once during the Strawberry Festival.
And, you know, years ago, probably 10 years ago, we were asked to develop a curriculum course for high school students. Yeah, we did. And there was a date, and this was.
So wait, I'm sorry. I missed it. For which students?
High school students.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Rhonda Reagan contacted us and asked if we could develop a curriculum for the students because she said every year she had students who needed extra credits, and this would be a great little course for them. And it would be a pass/fail sort of course. And so we went to great trouble to develop a curriculum, and we had a date set for, I'm just speculating, say April 1st. Well, April 1st at 2 o'clock, no one showed up. So we go to school and said, are the students coming? They said, what are you talking about? And we said, well, we have this course, and you said to start at 2 o'clock today, and we never made the announcement.
So if I may approach.
Please do.
That was before our time. Before our time.
Yes, it was.
I apologize. Come on.
It's going once more in the same thing.
Tina, this is how we find out. We made all the quilts on the street. You've been in there, haven't you?
No, I haven't. I went in. I know, I know, I know. I need to go. I know.
It's unbelievable.
Yeah.
It is.
But Michelle remembers.
I do. I was at that, I was obviously taking minutes out of the board meeting when they approached. I remember that very well.
And some of the board members at that time thought it was wonderful that we were developing, of course.
They were all in agreement. They loved it.
It was 2000, recent 2000.
So there you go.
Excellent. Thank you.
Can we share that with Mary?
We will. Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
This is wonderful.
She's the special director.
So that was probably why it was possible. I think that's awesome.
Exactly. I know. You have period clothing in there, too. Yeah.
Oh, yeah. They're having a motion.
Like Strawberry Bank.
Maybe trying to tie, they were also trying to tie that in with the senior mentors, weren't they?
Yes.
So I'd like to make a motion that we allow the Litchfield Historical Society to petition, petition the state of New Hampshire to add Griffin Memorial School to the New Hampshire State Register of Historic Places.
I second.
So you've already registered it, correct?
No.
You have?
We just did the preliminary work.
Okay. So I guess, can you do that, or does the school have to do that where they own it?
We have to do the preliminary work. The state, we submit that to the state. The state reviews it. And if they then accept it, then they ask us to go to the owners of the buildings and ask them to submit it. Whether or not it is submitted and approved, the state now has a documented record of the school, and believe me, it is extraordinarily detailed.
That's why it took us two years.
Two years, yeah.
Much more than we ever expected.
I think we'll do this on a separate motion, a memorandum.
Yeah, I just wanted to explain.
So they will stay with it.
And then the application can move forward. It can't move forward unless you say it's all right to let it go.
So Michelle, can I add this into the motion?
Sure. You can amend the motion.
Yeah.
Do you want me to do it, or am I?
No, I'll amend it. I just want to amend the motion to include, well, to put GMS, the 30s building, or GMS, whatever it is, on the New Hampshire State Register, along with the memorandum of understanding from the Litchfield School Board that has been passed out to you for both parties to sign in order to go through.
If I can just speak to the MOU, so.
I'll give a second.
Sorry, do you need it?
I seconded.
And just to speak to the MOU. So we pulled out our file, and we have the deed and so forth. And we have quite a history in there. But what we're thinking down the road is, we don't know what the future is going to hold. And so this just, it's really a very simple MOU, and it just captures everything we've said tonight. But at least we would have signatures in that file, because you never know if this question is still on the table 50 years from now, and none of us are here to participate in that discussion. And if the state register changes, you know, we just want to be able to rely back on the understanding that the board entered into at the time. So it's four points. It's just asserting that we own it, and that we agree that it's honorary only with no restrictions, and the parties agree that the owners are free to maintain, demolish, whatever. And then finally, just the acknowledgement is, we can't use it. It's, right now, it's a part of the building that is not available to us because of like, safety codes, et cetera. So the investment we would need to make also to make that usable again is pretty high. And it's been looked at. And so we just wanted to acknowledge that's the current situation, because we are engaged in ongoing dialogue about what to do. You know, we are concerned about the location in the floodplain and a very damp site that causes us concern in the classrooms of the building. So we're just trying to capture all of that in this memo, and if the commission. So we're just trying to capture all of that in this memo and if, if the commission, commission committee is willing to sign that, I think it just helps us all to have one more thing in our file down the road. And we're totally open to language. If there's something in there that you think is off, you know, we can make that adjustment. And frankly, if the board feels it's not necessary, that's okay too. It was just a, an effort to kind of capture this.
It honestly is not necessary. The state of New Hampshire recognizes all of this. And we don't have authority over them. This is part of their registry project. They already have said there are no restrictions or regulations on this building. You own it. You are free to do whatever you'd like with it. The benefits are great money possibility. If you decide to do something on any part of the school system and you want information from state historic people or anyone else at the state level on how to do something. They're willing to give that and they do it for free to help you out, but if it's with any of that, all we're doing is just doing the paperwork to nominate the building.
But if you want it signed. I think, I think you made a good point about 50 years from now, right? It would be well to have this in the file. I think that's smart. May, may I make another comment? I know none of you know as board members, but in 2011 and 2013, Michelle, you know. The Historical Society put together a proposal to use the two original schoolrooms at Griffin for an art museum.
Remember that?
Never any, any conclusion.
I remember that.
I do remember that.
I do. I do remember that.
Yeah, it was a tapestry or something you wanted.
Yes, you know, I heard.
Right.
Yep.
Yep.
The curtain that was restored with.
Moose plate.
Fight funds. Funds. So we, we, we're still, we're still here and we'd still like to display that curtain and some Litchfield artifacts.
But I think that we've moved on to another location.
Oh, have we?
Not an old fire station.
Yeah, right.
So we have a motion for the amended motion in a second. Any further discussion? Very none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Motion will pass 5:00. And we'll just have that. We'll have the memorandum for you.
Thank you very much. If, if you have feedback for us, read it over. You just got it tonight. So read it over. If there's anything, let us know. We'll get it in final form and get it signed.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Go to final. Email me when you're ready. Email me and then we'll find the time to get it signed. Cause I, I'd like us to sign one and make copies of it all. You want one too? Be more in your file.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Have a good night.
We asked them that, remember, why the fourth graders don't go. I think, what a great day for the kids. I want to see the chandelier now. I want to go see the dance room.
So let's move on. Correspondence?
Oh, we did have some correspondence. Um, can you turn up the heat?
I just shut off the air conditioner.
It's freezing in here. I'm comfortable. It is not. Mine too.
Do you want to do the blower? All right, I have to go to the bathroom.
Then they'll get hot.
Okay, so we did have correspondence. I'll wait till everybody's back.
Okay.
Do we need Liz to be back? Okay. We received an email today, late this afternoon, um, from Samantha McClellan. I don't have, oh, I do. I have an, I do have an address. 31 Chase Brook Circle, Litchfield. And I'll forward this to you too, Michelle, so you can put it in the minutes. But she says, dear, dear school board. Chattering now because it's cold in here. I'm writing in regards to the split recess as I see it's on the agenda this evening, this year for third grade and the following plan for implementation the next years ahead. First, I will acknowledge that my daughter is in third and has been affected by this. I truly understand that this was a difficult decision. There are many constraints, many complaints in the past about meal times and increased student population to consider. There will probably never be an answer that will satisfy everyone as all parents have different priorities. However, with that being said, I am strongly against the splitting a grade at recess time. I believe that recess is an important, fundamental part of a child's socialization. I believe that splitting up the third grade as it is this year will have a lasting impact on the class as a whole in years to come. You're not getting the interaction and the benefit of becoming friends with other children in their grade. In younger school years, social, socialization and community is truly the classroom itself. As years go on, the children are placed in different classes. The community changes from class to grade level. Third grade in particular seems to be a point in which students are friends with many in other classes. They make friends with those in their new class, but then they learn how to maintain and grow relationships with past friends that are now in other classes. This split has made the socialization model unable to happen. Some children have smaller circles of friends due to shyness, due to possible special needs, anxiety, or just may only have that one special friend and support system. These children are now being separated from those support systems. This could cause many emotional issues and seems to be the opposite message that the district is working toward with mental health. These are fundamental years. I worry that this decision has put into motion many issues for the future of the separated classes. I understand, as I said before, that this was a tough choice, but I still believe that it was the wrong one. No classes should be split. That was it for correspondence.
Is the comments, is that school board comments? Michelle, the next bullet?
No, the next bullet is superintendent comments, but you can certainly move up your school board.
No, that's fine. I didn't know if that, with that superintendent comments. It says comments superintendent.
There you go. So, uh, so let me just start with the GMS lunch. So, um, just to make sure the board is aware of everything that's going on with the conversation about lunch. It's really a lunch recess question. So I've met with Principal Thompson after our last meeting and he went through. Pretty detailed list of records that he had relative to the thought that he had put into developing the schedule, how he landed where he did, the communication flow, et cetera. So he and I went through that. We discussed some things relative to it. I've also met with a parent, a couple of parents actually, who came to see me regarding the topic. Heard concerns, have relayed information back. I know that the PTO last night had kind of an open forum on the lunch recess schedule. And then based on that, and I think Tara, you attended it as a parent, but with the school board hat on. So you've got some observation from that also. So at this point, Principal Thompson has received a lot of feedback and is trying to wrestle his way through a pretty complex problem. I feel a little bit like it's whack a mole that when we make one adjustment, we're going to find another thing that pops up and is going to cause another piece down the road. So what we're doing is trying to work our way through the variety of things so that we can identify the best course going forward. So we haven't reached a final solution on any of this. I, I think you'll find that it's, everybody would say it's not ideal, but then when you look at other scenarios, they're not ideal also. So it's sort of picking the best non-ideal situation to make sure that we get everybody fed and plug ahead. So that's where it currently sits from my angle. I have reinforced to Scott that he's the principal of the building. He needs to be able to schedule the building. He needs to be able to run the building. Because there's, as I said, there are competing. Schedules that would just cause another conflict, I'm afraid. And so he's got to try to find a way through all of this based on parent feedback, board feedback, my feedback. And then he's got to kind of land on the best thing to do. So.
I just answered a question. When is the first lunch?
When does he start the first lunch? Uh, I can pull that time up.
I'm just curious.
It's like 11:00 something. Yep.
Most schools start at quarter of 11:00. I know my school starts at 20 of 11:00.
I have 10:50 written down, but that of the recess time, oh, that was, okay, sorry. Yes, 11:00.
Well, Liz, they go a lot later.
So last year, I, we had to, we had.
We used to have snacks in the afternoon.
Well, we had the opposite conversation last year. Last year, we had parents complaining about starting lunches too early and, and ending lunches too late when we had five lunches. And.
There were five lunches last year?
At the beginning of the year, we started off with five and then.
And he combined them?
And then we split a class to combine them. I mean, I think ideally we would be, if we have, you know, in a dream world, we'd be able to, to combine a lunch. Like and have third and fourth without splitting a grade. I think it's the, it's not necessarily the, the multi-ages. It's the splitting of the peer groups within that grade. That is concerning to parents and I, I, you know, I, I completely understand. When I think about what's, what's more important. I have to side on, you know, for my, thinking for my kids and most kids, I think it's the, it's, we can. I think it's the, the socialization and their peer interactions. If I think about, you know, starting a lunch period earlier in the morning or later in the afternoon. I think, I, I don't know. I can't speak for the teachers, but I, I would guess that they would say, I can offer another, an extra snack. You know, if they, if they need that, if, if that's what the kids need, we can have an afternoon snack. We can have an early morning snack. But, I mean, I don't know. I haven't talked to, to teachers about this. I don't know what the boots on the ground.
And my, and my question is to what, uh, how, how do you get that time? So are you going to stop instruction for 10 minutes so that you can have an additional snack?
Right.
You know, so there's a, there's a ramification. So all of these pieces are what I think, you know, providing the feedback to Scott to say, so what would that look like? If you started feeding.
A working snack.
Feeding lunch at, you know, 10:45. But I'll tell you, when I walk into a first grade classroom and I see students eating snack, that's what they're doing. It is snack time. It is not, there's nothing academic occurring. We've stopped everything else in order to have snack.
But I think as kids get older, if you're in a third or fourth grade classroom, they're capable of having. You know, I, I think it looks different for each grade.
What, what class has the first lunch?
In third grade.
I would think the kindergarten would be the easy class to give them an extra snack.
In the afternoon when they're winding down.
Right.
Yeah.
You know, if you give them one in the morning, even though you give them an early lunch, let's say you start lunch like you said, 15 minutes early.
Yeah. That is their snack.
So do they, so they'd start 10 minutes of 11:00?
So you're saying add it just to kindergarten?
An extra snack?
Yeah, you're not, you're not adding snack across the board.
I think each teacher knows their students, I mean, best, I mean, whether or not they need one, but. If you're taking kindergarten, who has lunch, who do they have lunch with? No one?
No.
They're on their own.
That was last year.
So the other class is just 15 minutes early. I mean, that's, I'm thinking more the kindergarten kids because I'm sure, I, I can't imagine they eat much at lunch. They probably just like talk and play and everything else.
They can't figure out how to open their milk bottles probably.
So they go back and they're hungry as soon as they're done lunch. Look, you give them the extra snack.
Who's the last lunch? Third grade? That's like quarter one or something?
Fourth grade.
Fourth grade?
Through 1:35.
That's their lunch?
Is when they end.
1:05 they start.
Oh, they can have a snack in the morning at 10:00?
Yeah, they do have a snack in the morning. I'm saying, I think an easy solution, just have five lunches just done 15 minutes early or 20 minutes early.
So again, keep in mind that we had five last year. So here are the problems that we ran into. Our food service workers and their hours, right? So we have to keep in mind that parameter in terms of the work hours they have, right? So that was something that backed them into a corner last year. So we just have to have an answer to it. If it results in additional time for our food service workers to be able to do the job. There's a result, you know, ramification that comes, right? So it's just, I mean, if, if we're opening up the gate to allow us to be able to make these moves, knowing that there's, again, moving parts, right?
Again, right. Again, the board doesn't know all the parts, but I mean, looking at it, you know, just the whole picture. And Scott knows as far as, you know, the food help or, or you may know.
How long are the lunches? 30 minutes? Who has a 30 minute lunch?
I mean, there's your lunch right there.
25. Ours are 20.
That was within consideration too, and that, that hit roadblocks as well.
What, 25 minutes?
It hit, that hit roadblocks as well. Everything that we tried within the past couple of years has really faced a challenge. Anyway, we try to do it.
Is there transition time scheduled in between lunches?
No, it's like combined between your recess and lunch. It's.
Is it a handoff from one monitor to another?
Nope. It's the monitors who are with them then escort them, right? So that, that's built in in order to help with the transition. So last year, I think.
It was 10 minutes of transition.
I agree. Yeah.
He started with five in order to make the five lunches work and then had to increase it because it wasn't enough time to wipe the tables down.
Who wipes the tables down?
It's, I think it's the monitors that do it. Yeah.
The janitors don't do it?
That's correct. The garbage cans.
My, my kids at our school do it. So the kids who finish early can go get a rag from the kitchen and they start wiping down tables. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. My kindergartners do it.
What an honor.
They love it.
You get spraying detail.
Well, it's just a wet wash. It's just like a wet towel. They just wipe it down.
How many hours are they working right now, Corey, in the kitchen help?
Hmm, depends on which, down at GMS?
Yeah.
Say they come in. The lead's there first thing in the morning. Probably 7:30 to 3:30. She's full time.
Right, but the other people.
The other people are shorter. They're probably there about four hours. They're part-time.
So I, it's not our, I mean, it's not our job. We do it anyway because we're fixers. That's why we're on the school board, but it's not our job to, to come up with a solution. But, you know, I've talked to parents. I, I actually, um, I emailed Janet Gee, who's one of the, one of our longtime lunch monitors, just to see. How is it going? You know, if she had any feedback and she said that it is a lot harder with the bigger, with seven classes in having lunch at one time.
So what's that, like 135 kids? Trying to pick?
Yeah, that's roughly if you combine it.
So I, I mean, I, I don't know what the right answer is.
With the incorporation of kindergarten, is that what you're saying?
Well, with having a split. So if you have split third grade, then half of them are with second grade. So that's.
Yeah, so it's, it's 80 and 40. So you're roughly at, I mean, I'm using quick numbers, but. 120 as opposed to 80.
Right.
Harder to clean up in between them.
Harder to, well, she said that, that they have seen increased behavior issues because it's a little more crowded. It's harder to get the kids, you know, it's, it takes longer to get through the line and make sure that they're all eating and.
It's louder.
It's louder. Yep. Yep.
Traffic light in there.
What is the cap hole? The individual, they know that.
I think he said 162.
That's the fire code, right? So they just count square feet and say, this is how many bodies you can put in there. That doesn't mean we want to do that.
Right.
That's what the tables out. So that's for the seating versus if the tables are put away and you had chairs out, it's a different number.
So 162 with the tables?
Wow.
But the tables would occupy where students line up now because if you think about the way that they access the food lines and where the cash register is, there'd have to be tables to get 162. So, you know. I mean, honestly, if, if the board is giving us the green light to examine staffing, you know, it could be additional monitors that are needed in order to help with the transitions, make this work. It could be additional time for the food service workers. I mean, those are parameters that Scott is working within now, but if we can say to him, okay, come back with something that tells us. I, you know, if, if I had an extra half hour for every cafeteria worker, here's how we can do it.
Yeah.
You know, if that's.
Another factor that was mentioned last night was the limitation of the, um. The teacher, the teacher contract and having the recess break along with the lunch break and. That might be, if that's a constru-, if that's a constraint under any of these situations, there might be an opportunity to do a sidebar on that as well.
I would say the like, so let me, let me talk about the history of that. If you look back to the collective bargaining agreement from 1996 to 1998. In 1996, the teachers were expected to do duties in cafeteria and on the, on the playground. When the fifth grade went up to LMS, it specifically, you can see the change in the language in that contract. It says now, starting in 1997, when the fifth grade is up. And when we go from five lunches to four, we would like this time to be, and that's exactly where the common team planning and putting recess and lunch together occurs in the contract. And so all of that was based on the four lunches that we had up until kindergarten came last year. And so, um. I think it was actually a pretty progressive and smart move to guarantee that our teachers have time in the day to focus on curriculum and the work that they need to do. And the likelihood that they would negotiate, because it is a matter of collective bargaining. We have to sit down. And if you come up with an agreement that moves that. And if you come up with an agreement that moves that time or changes that time, again, there would be a price to pay for that. If I were on, if I were a teacher, I would want something.
They said that the, well, it was last year it was first grade, this year it's third grade. They said that because of these split lunches, they don't get that.
Right.
Planning time and that.
Right.
The the common planning time and that.
They should be able to get it.
But it's two issues, right? So the issue is you have to have the time. So half half the teachers who are combined with fourth grade have that time. It's just not common. But it's still uninterrupted an hour, uninterrupted in the middle of the day for lunch and planning. So then the team planning has to occur during um, yes, exactly, during special time. So it does.
So it does occur, but in a different.
Their lunch and recess doesn't overlap with the lunch before it. Do you know what I'm saying?
Yes, it does.
It does, so.
But each grade level has that.
But they could eat lunch while the other one has.
Right, that's what they do now.
So just so the rest of the board knows, I I reached out to Dr. Jenny and asked that when GMS comes to us at our next meeting, that this is the topic we discuss. No, I I mean, we're asking all kinds of questions, but Scott knows most of the answers. So we can like sit here and go around the table and come up with different solutions. But I'd like Scott to look at like, and when he does come and we discuss this, he's got a couple of weeks to get a cost analysis of what it would cost to add a fifth lunch.
And and I think freeing him up to say, okay, come back with.
What are some options?
You know, strip away some of these parameters that you're working with, the ones that you can't.
I think I think with all the parameters, you know, there's it's kind of boxed into this is the solution that works. And if we can kind of think outside the box and give him some leeway, I think maybe we can solve this problem.
When he does that, can he take in, are the tutors still doing lunch and re- on recess duty?
Tutors, I believe, are.
They are.
See, I don't think that's right in any way, shape or form. They should be working with the kids.
I had a question too, because as a kinder- as a kindergarten para, I know what it's like to have, you know, we only have twenty-two kids that need their milks and their yogurts and their gogurts and there's fruit snacks opened and unwrapped and organized, and it's a lot. Do the kindergarten paras go with the kids to lunch?
No.
I don't believe so, no.
That's when they take their lunch?
They go out with them during their recess. So they're required to take their thirty-minute lunch.
Very much.
Do we not have recess staff out at that time?
But the thought was there was additional.
Wait a minute. So he's still following the model from last year from combining first kindergarten for recess? You know what I'm saying?
So that's why I asked, this will be Scott's topic.
Right.
Yeah. This one along with another one that's on here, right here, bussing, that you'd be happy to know that it's another discussion I want to have with Scott. And it's a perfect opportunity. I mean, we want to know like what's going on in schools and everything else. And these are two issues right now that are coming, you know, surfacing. And the bussing is one and the lunch and playground, the whole thing is.
I think there should be kindergarten paras at lunch with the kids.
And again, why don't we wait until Scott's here and we'll have that.
Okay, I will. I'm gonna start my list.
Is there is there any um is there a reason to wait until our next, I mean, that's a month away, if Scott if.
Two weeks.
He's he's here October second.
Oh, he's here the first, okay, never mind. Well, I was gonna, I mean, if Scott can get started on this now with, if he does, he doesn't have to wait for a discussion with us, right? I mean, we're not the problem solvers.
We're not the problem solvers, but we can help him. But if he can gather some information as far as, because if it's cost involved and adding personnel, then that's something we do get involved with.
Parish, there shouldn't be parrots out there for recess monitors for kindergarten. I, that's last year's model.
When they were combined with.
When they were combined with first grade and there were higher numbers. So I'd be interested to find the answer to that.
So but my question back to you would be, if you have paras, so our paras have a thirty-minute lunch. They have a lunchtime equal to the students, right? So what would they do during recess time?
One, well, there would be one at lunch and one at recess, so they would alternate.
So you're saying split them up?
Right.
So they both get their lunch, but they rotate their.
Yeah.
You're not you're not proposing that.
They all go out there or have an hour off in the middle of the day. No, I would never say that.
I want to make sure I'm clear, because, you know.
I think lunch is more important than recess when there's that number, because I see, I have seventh graders that can't even open their lunches.
But this is helpful, because I think we we have to empower Scott and say, come back to us with a proposal. What would it look like if you had two additional monitors? How could you utilize them to streamline some of this and?
I don't think the answer is adding monitors. Not in my mind, but.
No, I think we have, I think we have staff. I think we have ample staff that I don't know for certain, but again, if we allow Scott to think outside the box and.
Yep.
And come back.
But the, remember, it was Lauren initially with the cafeteria, right? So when we started with the five, she said, you know, the last kid's coming through the line and my staff is punching out five minutes later and they have to.
Yeah.
They have to clean up the kitchen. I mean, there's.
Yeah, we definitely won't.
Right?
More feedback from Lauren.
So there is that piece also that we just, again, have to coordinate and keep in mind.
Yeah.
Can the lunches be shortened if there's less people in them, you know? You said your lunches are twenty minutes each, right?
To allow the passing time, so twenty-five minute lunch and that that will count for the passing.
I was wondering if the behavior issues are seeing, because the kids are done with fifteen minutes of lunch, about thirty-nine lunch.
Don't you dummy bears?
Dummy bears.
Fat-free food. All right.
So.
Well, he did say last night, Mr. Thompson did say, you heard it, right? That he was gonna go back and look at other alternatives.
Who's on his team? Did he say who's on his team to do this? Is it just him and Maura doing this or is there? Did he ask?
It's funny, it's like we're asking like thousand-one questions and the one person can answer is not here.
True.
I'll I'll keep going back to that. I thought he was here. I thought this was his meeting. That's why I asked Dr. Jettie. So at this meeting, we can have, this is Scott's topic, but it's not. It was Mr. Leifler's. But we keep asking questions that Scott can answer for us when he's here.
Okay.
Good, keep asking.
Frankie Pants.
He presented some poll, he presented a couple of polls last night too that were very, I mean, the whole presentation was very hard to see. I had to move like right up to the screen because I didn't have my glasses. So I think that that would be good information for us to have before.
Oh, to read through?
I agree.
Read through, uh, because there were a number of questions from the audience about those. You know, I think we also need to think about, you know, one point I tried to make last night was that I feel like there's a big balance between, you know, how early are we willing to go for lunches and how late, you know, what's acceptable there? Because it wasn't acceptable last year versus splitting up the classes.
I was I was gonna speak during the community forum piece on this particular issue, so that I'm happy to wait my turn.
Okay, we're in.
Since we're on it, do you mind if I?
Go right ahead.
I promise to be brief. I am a parent of a third grader. This is an issue that concerns me from a parent perspective. Should I identify myself?
No, you name an address.
Heidi Ames, twenty-one, Musstalo.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I also happen to be the president of the GMS PTO. So I was present for last night and have solicited a lot of feedback on this particular issue. One of the areas that I think is, I think is the most important point here is that I, on Monday, sent an email out to each of the grade teams, K, one, two, three, and four, invited them to the PTO meeting and it said, if you cannot attend, to please send me some sort of statement or if you have any consensus on how you feel about this policy, to please let me know. Grades K, two, and three each sent me a statement, all saying that they do not support the policy or the decision to split grades, that there needs to be an alternative to this. They want to work together to find an alternative to this. Grade one sent a representative who's sitting back there, and she read a statement. And again, the statement was essentially, we understand that this is very hard and difficult. We don't envy your position, but here are all the negative effects we had last year and the things that we saw both as a team, but most importantly, the developmental issues we saw socially with the kids. Fourth grade also sent a representative that read the same statement, or similar statement. There is not a team of of classroom teachers at GMS that agrees that this current decision to split grades is the right one. And so to me, those teachers, those boots on the ground, do not support this. And I think that goes a long way, even beyond parent input, which, don't get me wrong, parent input is very important. But I think that most important voice is not being listened to. And I'm frustrated because I've spent a lot of time on this and the answers that I'm repeatedly getting are, it doesn't work. It's not, let's work together and find a solution. It's, it doesn't work and here's why, or here's the parameters that we're working in.
So if I can just ask, I'm just curious if the five grade levels you're referring to, all at GMS, if they gave any thoughts as far as a solution to the problem?
Uh, yes. Grade three provided a actual lunch plan to Mr. Thompson, outlining it was a ten fifty start for lunch and then the last lunch ending, I believe it was one forty. It was a five-minute transition time. Currently, to answer your question, there's a ten-minute transition time. So the first lunch starts at eleven oh five. It goes to a recess, no, lunch, I'm sorry. They're out at recess first. Eleven oh five to eleven thirty-five. The next lunch doesn't start till forty-five. Again, to ten minutes of transition time to allow monitors to clean tables and to get where they need to go for the next recess.
I, reasonable, I'm sorry, I have, has anyone seen that? Is five minutes reasonable?
So again, I spent some time polling some different schools, Bedford and both Merrimack Schools, Hollis. Five-minute transition time seems to be the most common. I'm not saying that there's not a school out there that isn't ten minutes, but five minutes seems to be the most common. So again, my understanding, both from the presentation last night and my and from what I knew, they did initially have five lunches last year with ten minutes of transition time, which extended the kitchen time. So that was a problem. That was then tweaked during the year to shorten the transition time to five minutes. And that's when the complaints rolled in from the monitors and from the teachers, because the monitors were not over at the playground in time to meet the teachers, to collect the next recess grade, to bring them to the playground. And so from that came the decision to split grade one last year. And so my solution to this, and I proposed, I proposed two solutions to this that I would like to see explored more thoroughly, perhaps even tried out during the the next two weeks, would be instead of having, and this is gonna sound confusing, so I'm gonna explain as best I can.
Can I just ask, did you give that to Scott?
Yes.
Scott has that plan.
Yes.
Last night or before?
Both. I, we met on the fifth.
So can we just let Scott answer it next time? Why that?
He did, his answer is it's a fallacy, quote unquote.
What is?
That the recess monitors can do five minutes.
Okay. I.
Even under the proposal of the lunch monitors staying put and the recess monitors staying put. Currently, they follow their grades. So if you have, you have six monitors, three and three, one's out on the playground with a grade, they follow, they bring them into the cafeteria, and then they turn into cafeteria monitors with that same grade, monitor them for lunch. Meanwhile, other recess monitors are out there with the next grade. This group has to wipe down the tables and get back up here to collect the next grade while this group is bringing the kids over here to the cafeteria.
And suit up and and.
And that's the transition time that was a problem. That was taking too long. They didn't have enough time to wipe and get up here. So the, what I am not understanding why it doesn't work and the answer has not been clear to me is why they can't stay put. You have recess monitors, you have lunch monitors, they stay, collect kids, they stay, clean tables. Five minutes of transition time. I I was told that's a fallacy, that that would not work, but again, I don't understand why that can't be tried. The other issue I don't understand is why kindergarten can't be eating in their classrooms. I have been approached by two kindergarten paras that have specifically requested they want to monitor the kindergarten lunch. They've asked to monitor the kindergarten lunch because their kids are coming back hungry, they're not eating, they can't get their food open, they can't get their milk open, and they want to be there to help, whereas the other recess monitors are are apparently not doing that. And so they've asked to do that and have been told that's not an option. Again, it's not been made clear why. And so for me, I want to work together collaboratively for a solution to this. I think the consensus, to me, the teachers alone, but the consensus is this doesn't work. But every time I've tried to propose solutions, I fully admit, I'm an attorney. I don't work in the schools. I don't know the ins and outs. I don't know everything about this. I sh- I'm not the one who should be coming up with solutions. But I'm a mom, I'm involved in the school, and I'm trying to come up with a way that my kid can see her friends during the day, because she doesn't at all. There is no interaction between these forty kids and these forty kids for the entire day. She literally does not see Maggie as Vicky at all on the playground, because Maggie's in the other lunch and she's in this lunch and recess. They have no bus time together. So any playtime she has with the friends that we spent a lot of time developing for her in grades one and two, she doesn't see. And that's difficult for her, but very difficult for me to see her struggle with that. And the answer that I've been given is kids are resilient, they'll make new friends. And that's not good enough for me. And that's not good enough for the parents that I've talked to. This isn't just me. I would not be up here if it were just, well, maybe I would be up here if it was just. It is not just me, I promise you. We had thirty-five people attend our PTO meeting last night. We usually average nine. It was the first meeting of the year. That may have been why we have new parents that are excited and interested. But I can tell you, I advertised this issue. We had twelve parents that spoke out negatively against this policy and said how it's either affected their kid or that they're scared it will affect their child. I kept a tally as parents spoke. There was one, in fairness, who spoke out positively and said, my kid adjusted fine and reacted fine. I think that it's a disproportionately clear that the splitting of grades doesn't work. The teachers don't like it, the kids don't like it. And unfortunately, the answer I continue to get and the emails as recently as one forty-two today are, we've looked at that, or we've looked at all the different options, this continues to be the best option. We've looked at all the different options, this continues to be the best option.
Who's weak?
I I think Scott's referring to him and Maura, who are charged with scheduling the building. So I would assume them, they are the weak.
And and it's not a, I'll take your your feedback under advisement and we will work together to come up with something. Or let's get one of each team leads to come in and we'll work together with a somebody to come up with a solution. It's it's none of that. It's, this is what we've decided for the year and this is what is happening for the year, and I don't see movement.
I do know that one of the schedules that came in, I think it was the third grade team, proposed a, I want to say a thirty-minute lunch for the K one, two, and a twenty-five minute lunch. So one of the ways they shortened was changing the amount of lunch time.
That's smart, less.
It's smart, and except Scott then heard from other people who said, but that's grievable. Right? And so the point is that if you're not treating everybody equitably, you now open yourself up to. So even though something that seems like it's gonna be a real, hey, this will work, we can make this go, but then, wait a second, not with everybody. And it takes one person.
If he had the teachers on board, they would have worked through this.
But I I will tell you, he could have all the teachers on board and the association could could do a grievance, just because it's not equitable.
Find in the contract, and I'm not certain what it stipulates as far as their collaborative time, as far as the class level, how much time they're they get, and then how much time is allowed for lunch. So if they're using an hour right now.
What it says is the teachers will have a lunch equal to the students. So if you schedule students for twenty-five, teachers have to have twenty-five, thirty, thirty. The question is, can you do thirty for some and twenty-five for others and have that be acceptable?
Then the high school gets twenty minutes.
And recess is stipulated as thirty minutes.
That's what their students have.
And the thirty minutes have to be butt up against the twenty-five or thirty.
Because the thirty minutes is for the team teachers to get together.
The thirty minutes is the recess time and that's when they are.
Then there's the passing time.
So the motion cut is five minutes.
Well, you could cut the lunches back to twenty for everybody, because then teachers would have a twenty-minute lunch. It would be equal to the twenty minutes for students. Right? Because it just says it has to be, the teacher lunchtime has to be equal to the student lunchtime.
And right now they're.
They are both at thirty, if I have it right, and.
But the third grade doesn't have that common planning time because they're split, right?
They have it during the special times. And unlike first grade, because there are the five specials, so it is more. I I don't think it happened the same way with first, because they only have the four specials.
So part of the restrictions then is what's written in the contract as far as the amount of time.
Right, yeah.
What's the passing time then? Is that an addition to the hour? Then that should count for something, shouldn't it?
Time and.
Well, recess is is stipulated at thirty. So it is thirty minutes for recess.
The ten, there's ten more minutes unaccounted for for transition or five minutes. Wouldn't that eat up that extra five minutes? Do you know what I'm saying?
No, I think it's in the thirty. I think the thirty-minute lunch, that doesn't mean students are sitting with food in front of them for thirty.
But he said it's ten minutes now.
It's a ten-minute transition time for the monitors to be able to clean the tables and be able to get over to here to meet the next grade. What the teachers bring the students to recess.
Which doesn't count as lunchtime.
Correct.
Right? So that's transition time, yeah.
I'm making assumptions. I don't know. Would be my fair answer. I want to work together on this. And so what I'm here to ask, and I I asked Dr. Jettie and I. I want to work together on this. And so what I'm here to ask, and I asked Dr. Jettie and I have asked Mr. Thompson, and I'm here to ask you, I would like a directive. I would like some sort of, I understand maybe you won't feel comfortable doing that, but I would like some sort of open conversation with Mr. Thompson that says that this isn't working, this isn't going to work, find something else, present us options, and we can figure something out. But I don't want it to be, "Let's form a committee and we'll spend all year thinking about it," because these third graders are split now. And so I'm looking for a more fast-track solution. Last year, we changed the lunch by November. We'd actually changed it for the second time, because again, it was shortened to address the food service issue. And then it was shortened, it was changed to the four-lunch model instead of the five-lunch model. I'm looking for a directive that says, "Here's the feedback we have, this doesn't work." I'm happy to put surveys out there, I'm happy to do parent survey to say if, if it meant your kids don't have to be split, are you okay with a 10:45 lunch or a lunch that starts at 1:15 and ends at 1:45? At the end of the day, I think the feedback is going to be overwhelming. It already has been overwhelming. The email that was sent to you is just a taste of the emails that have been sent to Mr. Thompson. But the answers that people are getting back are very much, for lack of a better word, dismissive. The decision is made for this year and we're all done talking about it.
Well, I think Scott has a directive, because Dr. Jettie, I'm sure, has already notified him that this is the topic we want to discuss. And obviously, we want to discuss it not because it's working, because it's not working.
Right.
And, you know, if he can get some numbers for us as far as what the cost would be, the impact, and then we can have a discussion in two weeks as far as, okay, what type of resolution is there? What, you know, lay off five different plans that could possibly work. And here's the thing, we're not going to appease everyone. You know, someone's going to be upset that lunch is late, someone's going to be lunch is early. You know, maybe a simple resolution, that's one I thought of, is why can't kindergarten just eat in their room?
That's.
I don't know if that's what the teachers want, if they, you know, have a problem with that, because then they can eat anytime. And you can just have lunches rolled the way they did two years ago or last year.
So I don't know the answer to that either. I think it's worth asking, Scott. I'm going to imagine, our kindergarten classrooms are carpeted. And so I would imagine milk on carpets would be something that was a concern versus a cafeteria where you have a floor that you can mop. Again, you just got to think your way through it. So do we want to pay? No, seriously, my kids don't eat in the living room for a reason, right? So do we want to add to the carpet cleaning budget in order to make sure that we are taking care? It's just a question. So then maybe it's not kindergarten, maybe it's first grade that needs to eat in the classrooms, because those floors are tiled. And so there's another way to get at it. I mean, there's a bunch of things here, but.
I think there was a question too of how are the lunches going to get to the kids? Are they going to go get them or are they going to be brought by, because the food service staff doesn't have the time to bring them to them and deliver? Or the pair is going to go get them?
I think, what an honor to push the lunch cart.
I'm just saying, all of this is, we can talk to all of this, but.
It sounds real simple to have kindergarten in the class, but then what are they going to do? Truck them all into the caf to get their lunch and truck them all back?
No, reel it out in a car.
Reel it out in a car. You got five kids who want hot lunch, okay, five on a tray, here you go. Again, I'm not saying it's simple. You're right, there are things that we don't think of and they're going to, did you want to tell?
To, very quickly.
Okay. Absolutely, they're already helping. As it is, they're already there doing, helping with the kindergarten lunch, because a parent went in to have lunch with her kid and saw that half of them were not eating. And she contacted the school and she herself and one other volunteer, there's three volunteers now that are going in for kindergarten lunch to help because these kids to eat.
Can I just say, I've been going to GMS for lunches for the last like nine years. Let me tell you right now. Kindergarten doesn't eat, first grade doesn't eat, second grade doesn't eat, and third grade doesn't eat. They talk, they create their food, then they like get rid of their food. I'm telling you, I've watched every class and more food goes in the garbage can, because they're done conversing and, okay, we're done now. So it's all grades.
I know we're out of order. Would you allow me to make a comment as well real quick? Just two things that just came up that I just wanted to answer real quick. Janine, don't get in your way. One thing was last year when first grade had 25-minute lunches, it was too short, because, and maybe it's different because the kids have been going to full-day kindergarten now, so first grade lunch is now their second year at it. But last year, we had kiddos, it was their first school experience for many of them, and 25 minutes was not enough to get the kids through the line and to their seat. There were kids who were taking their lunches off of the line and being told to throw it out, just straight. There were kids who were waiting the whole time, asking for, "How do I open my milk carton?" And they ran out of time, no one got to them, and they didn't get to have their milk. So we were actually taking their lunches back to the classroom and letting them have lunch in the classroom afterwards, because they were upset and, "But I didn't get to eat, what do you mean it's over?" They wanted to eat. So for 30 minutes seemed to be.
Was that when there were?
Yes, that was part of it too.
Five classes.
Oh, I'm sorry, no, so that was.
Sorry, when there were six.
The beginning of last year.
Beginning of the year, before the change.
Before a change, but also part of it was they had the, they had those PIN codes in the cafeteria that was slowing everything down, so that was part of it too. But the 25-minute lunch at that point was kind of a disaster. The working snack, we do in first grade, do a working snack in addition to a regular snack. Not all of us, the majority of us, we have a morning mental break, regular snack time, and in the afternoon, we have a working snack time. They're very good at it. They work right through, they know it has to be a dry, quiet snack. That is not, you know, squirting yogurt all over their work. And so they absolutely know what they're allowed to eat during working snack time, and they're very good at continuing the instructional time with a, with a working snack at six years old, so.
That's all. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it. Again, I'm looking to hopefully work together to find a solution for this. So I appreciate the opportunity to let you know how I feel about this, to let you know how other parents and the feedback that was from last night. And also, again, I was, I'm happy to send along those teacher statements, because I, to me, that's a key piece in all of this, is how the teachers are feeling about this.
Yeah, I think too, if we encourage Scott to get some feedback from, like you said, the boots on the ground, the recess and lunch monitors and the food staff.
That'd be my concern, Mike, is every group seems to not like this. But we're, I'm not sure the consultation's there. I agree, we shouldn't ask questions until Scott has a chance to go through it all, but maybe encouragement to take ideas and input.
And I like the idea of having him submit it before, so we don't have to go over every single thing thrown out.
There's a detailed description of all this, it will go to you.
Sorry, if I may, there was a seven-page, single-spaced presentation prepared for last night's meeting. So I'm sure that can be emailed with embedded links, so you'll have all the information you need with that.
So just on a side note, Robin Corbield's in the audience right now, just so happy that she's up at the middle school.
And I have to add, seventh graders and sixth graders don't eat lunch either.
How long are their lunches?
30 minutes.
30 minutes. But they don't get recess.
First lunch is at 10:45, last lunch is at, but we start school earlier. But their last lunch is pretty late, 12, 12:30 maybe, I think. I don't have that much. We start school earlier, but in fact, our kids are way earlier. Our kids start and wake in period one.
Well, thank you very much.
So GMS Playground, just a quick follow-up. So the playground has been fully installed, everything's there, the shade structure is up, if you haven't been by to see that. Our initial feedback was from Primex, our insurer, that we couldn't occupy it until they came and did a safety inspection on it. And Corey reached out to the installer, because we paid for professional installation of the playground to specifications. So I said, "Come on, let's get a letter from them and get it up to Primex and get the thing open." So we were able to do that. And so once Primex understood that it wasn't parent volunteers who installed this stuff, which happens in some places, in which case they want to lay eyes on it, right?
I think that's what happened with the current set.
Here, we paid the extra, or the PTO paid the extra, so.
The pitches.
It's open, the kids are on the swing, everything's going, and so I just wanted the board to know that that is where we landed.
Yeah, Primex will be coming on October 8th for the official inspection, but it's no concerns whatsoever.
And thank you, GMS PTO, for raising the funds for that.
And we are continuing to have dialogue about the winter closure. So stay tuned. You know, we're really examining, why do we close it? What are we gaining as a result? Do we have to close all of it? Are there certain hazards that differ from others, et cetera? So we'll keep you posted on that.
What?
Yeah, is that still going forward?
That's a separate phase, I believe.
So we are hoping to raise $10,000 for race grades. We made 20 last year, we made 20 the last two years, but we've only set a goal of 10,000. If we hit the 10,000, we're putting as the goal, the incentive to be the GAGA pit, which was about $3,500.
Thank you.
That's the goal.
LMS Robotics, and so we had a request from the board at the last meeting to examine the staffing. So we have found a way to hire two additional staff members at LMS. So I think currently, if I remember the numbers right, we have six people that are at, working on robotics at GMS, and there were only two at LMS. And so.
Yes.
One with a volunteer, right?
Well, it started off at the beginning last year, she was not paid, and then somehow we were able to employ the person who'd been volunteering for a year, and give her some compensation for that.
So there are now two additional people at LMS, so it'll be four paid positions at LMS this year.
Three? I think Tom said three, right?
All I know is that.
Stipend positions?
Was that there are three stipend positions. Myself, an assistant, running the fall teams, the convoy we have. And then we're picking up Mr. Mommy as a third person who's going to tackle that. And again, I think the concern that we have is our numbers are so big, they seem to be growing. There seems to be engagement for this, so I might not be informed if there's a fourth position.
I'm pretty sure we added a fourth, so we'll let you know. I'll do a double check on it, but.
Aren't you glad to say?
I believe that it was two, because we also looked at the rates of pay, and there's a difference between advisor and assistant. So there were additional assistants that were added. And so I got pretty confidence for. So we're addressing it. Also, for the board, so the book being read at the high school, The House of Spirits, was brought up as a concern for some parents. Mary is researching, and actually, she's taken on a bigger project, so it's one of those, when she starts to look at it. We're actually examining all the literature at the high school, when they've been through PERC, what are we reading? Just making sure that everything is in a row. We're finding the records were not, well, if they exist, we haven't come across them. So Mary's digging a little bit deeper at it. But just understand that we want to make sure that we have a good handle on the literature at the high school going forward. So and make sure that if something hasn't been through PERC, that it gets there, so.
I think the only people that have concern with The House of Spirits book is sophomores, all of them.
I actually read it.
And sophomore parents?
There was, there was some, there were some explicit topics, difficult topics, I think.
But there's also Kitchen God's Wife, and they read that, because it's appropriate. And there's another one, that they have to skip sections, the one in Mexico, what book is that?
That's The House of Spirits, isn't it?
Oh, is that it?
Is that Mexico?
On the Mexico?
There's rape scenes and stuff like that.
That's The House of Spirits, yeah.
Oh, they read that during the, okay.
That was summer, summer reading.
Well, so we're, I just want the board to know that we're on top of it. We're finding some documents, we just need to keep at it. Website updates, so the board knows, after the last meeting, we updated the meeting calendar, so that that is accurate on the website. We also restructured the way menus are linked, based on our feedback, so.
Lunch menus?
Lunch menus.
Oh, thank you.
So if you look at each school site now, we have told the school webmaster is not to touch this. There's a menu on the side, so the, you know, all the words that are on the side, the word "menu" is one of them. So you click on that, and what it does is it brings everybody to the district page where Michelle has the menus linked. So it's one extra click, but it is consistent. You're not going to get an April menu that's hanging out there, because it's going to be updated, and we're working internally on even one more step to streamline our process. But we addressed it, so it's appreciated.
There's always, "I can't find the lunch menu, I can't find the lunch menu," that's great.
Well, it was in, in all honesty, it was in three different places. So each school had it in a different location. Now it's in exactly the same location. First of all, all the lists are alphabetized, they weren't. They now are all alphabetical, and the word "menu" is where it should be. And when you click on it, it brings you to the menu. So that was a big gain for us, and it just took raising the issue and we got right after it. And then the last thing is the busing at GMS, and I just want to orient the board, if you click on the link.
I may have put comments on there already.
You did?
I did.
I drove past today at 3, I think it was about 3:30, and it was, they were still waiting for a bus. There were still kids out in the hardtop.
So what, just so the board understands, and again, this is a topic when Scott comes next time, but I want you to have the data. So he's been logging when the buses come in, so that you can see every single day of school. And I would ignore the first couple of days, because you can imagine, things are just running behind at the beginning. But you can see that they begin the dismissal at 2:50 in the afternoon.
When does the bell ring?
2:50. So at 2:50, students start to move. If parents are there, they're being sent down to the gym. He has streamlined that pickup process, so basically, parents have to come into the gym, their students meet them there, and then they sign out as they exit the back door of the gym. And there are two staff members doing the sign-out. So it's a little bit quicker, I guess, because there are two staff members there to do that. But that starts at 2:50. If you're a bus student, you are sort of waiting in the classroom for that process to play out. And I think they also go to kitty connection and the after-school program at that point, okay? Then they start to call students down for the buses that have arrived. And you can see that buses start to get there, you know, 2:58, 2:57, somewhere in that ballpark, or when the buses are rolling into the yard. You then see that the pickup in the gym is finished, they resolve the lists, the after-school activities and the kitty connection, and then they start to call students down to the buses. So they'll say, you know, "Bus 1, 2, 3, 4," whatever, you can come down at this point. That starts at 3:03. So students have been sitting in the rooms, waiting for the buses, and waiting for that reconciliation since 2:50. So it's roughly, you know, a 13-minute, what's the latest that we have on there? Actually, 13 minutes is the latest, because otherwise, it's as quick as 2:58.
I thought we asked him to dismiss everybody at once.
The buses aren't there.
But at 3 o'clock, they're there.
No, they're not.
Because if you look at it, Liz, we've got buses arriving.
We have to wait for every single bus to show up before he starts dismissing kids?
No, he's dismissing them, once they've reconciled the after-school activities, then they start calling down for the buses that are there.
So the pickup kids are the priority?
The pickup kids are getting reconciled first.
Because I drove by there, picked up Zoe last week.
Yeah.
I left, I had to do something first, I left. It was 3:06, there were only two buses sitting there, waiting for kids.
But I'm just looking at Monday at 2:55, he could have started 2:53, 2:55, 2:55, 2:47. There were one, two, three, four, five buses out there that he could have started loading.
Why are the buses getting to GMS so long, 20 minutes after dismissal?
What do you mean?
It, so dismissal at GMS is 3:10. We have to call it that. Dismissal is 3:10. That's when the buses get there, because they're coming from.
That's the time they're scheduled to be there.
They're not going out for coffee in between the middle school or the high school and there. That's how long it takes for them to get there. He's doing an early dismissal at GMS to get parents, so that they're not mixed up with that.
Except, except.
That's a half an hour.
Then our classes are all stopping for the early bell.
They are stopping.
So they're doing nothing.
That is correct.
For 20 minutes at the end of the day.
13 minutes at max, but yes.
Well, dismissal time is 3:10, and the early bell kids are, everybody's ready to go at 2:50.
Correct, because he's beginning the process to get it moving ahead. And I will tell you that Debbie and Joyce are very proud of being able to reconcile for every single student, so they've not lost anybody, you know, and they will tell you that they hang their hat on following this process to make sure that every student gets where they need to, and nobody is sent off in a wrong direction.
I think that's commendable, but I do have an issue with my kids missing out potentially on 20 minutes of instruction time or just sitting there with their backpacks and coats and hats and gloves on, ready to go for 20, it's 20 minutes, right? And then some of them have a 30-minute bus ride. Right, right, that's way too mu, way too much time.
So the only other way to get at this is to keep everybody in class instructionally up to 3:10, which is when your buses arrive, and to do one mass dismissal. That is.
There's one bus that arrives at 3:07.
You then flip it around to, you're not going to be able to reconcile everybody, the buses will be gone, there'll be kids in the wrong spot. I mean, just all of that will potentially happen, and that's why they have this early dismissal. What do they call it, early buzz, I think?
Early bell.
No, I don't think so, maybe.
Early bell.
It just.
If I was a school teacher, I would have a grievance, because why is a GMS teacher staying in his or her classroom until 3:15 every day watching kids, when the other teachers can leave? They have to stay an additional 15 minutes to watch their kids.
Who's staying 15?
The teachers, they have to stay in the classrooms with their kids.
The school day ends at 3:20. Staff can leave GMS at 3:20.
But what about, like, when can the high school leave? But what about, like, when can the high school leave?
It's a different con, different contract hours.
It's not a different time, and they don't get a half-hour collaboration time.
Everybody needs to be, yeah.
Every school's different, and they all start different.
So are the specialists going into the classrooms when, that's, I'll ask him that, when?
The specialists are in the gym checking out.
But what happens to the kindergartners when Shawn Elliott is in her single classroom, with no paraprofessional, where do her kids go? When she's on bus duty? Because the rooms aren't connected, that's another question.
So I, I don't, that's, that's a Scott question, because I don't know that.
Because I, I, yeah, okay. I worry about kindergarten.
I think, I, I did observe, one teacher brought their students in the other classroom. So they doubled up the bus students, because you really had a class full of students waiting for the bus, because the other class had gotten their parents, right?
Then they also have students to go and help escort.
Well, I think we should push up the early bell then, if that's what it's going to be. I think the early bell should go till 3 o'clock.
I don't know, I, you know, my experience in the school that I work in is, they start calling buses at 2:20, and all the kids and the buses are gone at 2:30.
Where are the pickup kids, they go at the end?
No, they go at the same time. So they, they call, they call parent pickup kids, and, so they're in the, they're in the cafeteria. And they come in and line up, and sit on the floor, and they're grade-level lines. Parents come in and pick them up, just like we do at, at GMS. And then, while, while the kids are coming down for parent pickup, they're calling, like, the first four buses that have arrived.
That's what I was saying.
Yeah.
So you want to push the early bell to 3 o'clock, or 3:05?
Yeah, I think 20 minutes is a long time for early bell.
And, and eliminate the reconciliation.
They can do reconciliation when everybody's on the bus, and the buses, that's what every school I've worked at, they make sure everybody's there, the kids are on the buses, all set bus, buses, and then the buses take off. That's what they did in my three elementary schools I worked on.
Just.
But I haven't lost any kids.
How do you know all the kids are on the bus?
They double-checked before, they check, they check.
How do you double-check?
You could, Joyce is on the walkie-talkie. They won't let the buses go until every kid's gone from the cafeteria. And then they'll say, "All set at pickup," and then Mr. Thompson or whoever's out there will say, "Okay, the buses can go." That's the two, three schools.
So the early bell kids are still going first.
You're still checking to make sure all the early bell kids get picked up.
Oh, absolutely.
And then you let the buses.
They can be checked.
But you're loading the buses while the early bell kids are, are getting picked all day.
But again, the buses aren't there when the early bell happens.
Right.
Right.
So if you want to change the early bell, then that's opening up a whole other can of worms.
Why?
Because then the parents would only go at 10 minutes to 3, now we're going to go at 3:05.
Oh, well.
I'm just saying.
Maybe their kids will take the bus.
Oh, I'm nasty now, I'm going to tell me burns.
So.
I'm getting pain relief.
Going into, they're in my car. Going into next meeting with Scott, I wanted you to have the data, just, you know, I, I bent down and watched it. I think it's important, you know, if a board member wants to reach out to the front office staff, because they have very strong feelings about mass release, and then all of a sudden, there's a kid standing there, and they said, every single day, they are dealing with a kid who doesn't know where they're going, had a note that was stuffed in their backpack that didn't get handed in, I mean, all of that stuff, so. And just, you know, we had a meeting with Pickup Patrol, which is an app.
You just mentioned your daughter's, it's.
Where you, I'm using it in my daughter's school, I find it to be relatively slick, it builds lists simultaneously, but it's only as good as, you know, the people checking that, right? So, we're also dealing, I know, we have a small elementary school, so it's pretty easy to keep track of 100 kids. This is four times that size, so, anyway.
But it's easy enough for a kid, like you just said, not to go where they're supposed to go.
Yeah, that's why you don't release the buses, so everyone's accounted for. The one, two ways, whatever they call, all right.
But yeah, right, but a kid could get on the bus, and the parent's standing there waiting.
That's why you have the walkie-talkies, so you could say, Johnny's mom is here, he's, he's.
And that happens all the time.
Here, here's the other thing you can do, with the Pickup Patrol app, I can, right now, I can change the way my child gets picked up tomorrow. I can put it in, and it's there, and the teacher gets an alert, and it's done, right? But it shuts off at 2:30, which is 45 minutes prior to dismissal time in that school. And we have to be willing to look at parents and say, "Sorry, it wasn't in there 45 minutes in advance, your kid's on the bus, go get him." And we have to be willing to say that you didn't put it in the app, it doesn't happen, that's what we followed. And I'm just, you know, just, are we ready to do that? Because if we stick to our guns on it, that's a system that will operate and work.
Well, and I think too, I, I mean.
Can I tell you something else that'll throw a wrench in it? Go right ahead, the teacher contract, common practice.
What do you mean?
What I mean, it'll be a grievance. It's a grievance because for years, this is how they, this is what they've been doing, 10 minutes to 3, they stop.
Has it always been like that?
Well, as I remember.
Have we seen how other elementary schools pick up?
I don't know.
You change it, there was no grievance?
I'm just saying.
No, I'm just saying, but maybe one of our schoolteachers, you don't think to do that.
Well, let's, I mean, let's talk about it, let's get some feedback from teachers, and let's, you know.
I, I think we have to engage in that.
Yeah.
But just, again, it's not as, it's not as quick and simple, there's.
I didn't realize, I did not, I never knew, I've had two kids go through GMS, and I never knew that dismissal was 3:10.
Nor, nor did I, I did not realize.
I didn't know that, I thought it was 3 o'clock.
And what I mean by that is, that's when the buses get there, so it's.
Yeah.
All the buses.
It's a fallacy to think that dismissal's at 2:50, because parents are showing up at 2:50, so that they can get out of the crowd, right? But here's, if our buses aren't getting, what would happen in any other school? When the buses get there, you dismiss.
Yeah.
Right, so.
Yeah.
I think we just have to say that, that's when the buses get there.
Do they all fit around the horseshoe, all nine buses fit around the horseshoe?
Right, right. Yeah, I mean.
And you can see, what, which bus is latest, I mean, 3:07 is the latest time.
Yeah.
So my.
So the fact that they're, they're stopping, I mean, teaching kindergarten, I got to stop 15 minutes before the early bell, because that's when the kids get picked up, you know, at Memorial, we, we just, everybody is, you know, the end of the day is the end of the day for everybody. And there's, there's plenty of time, the, the parents can come in early, and they, they, they fill in a little thing, like, they get checked in to the gym, and then the kids come, they take their kids, and then they go.
But, again, going back to the reconciliation on whichever day I was there last week, there were two parents who left with their kid, and didn't sign out. And when asked about it, the office said, it, the, parents have the attitude, it's not my kid, I'm going to take my kid, I'm not going to go through your silly process of signing the kid out, if I've got my kid, I'm going. And so, that's the reality of it. So when we, you know, it's like, okay, did anybody see so-and-so, yes, we saw that parent.
Oh my gosh, that's horrible.
So we had to wait later?
The staff are checking off that I laid eyes on the parent, I know the kid went with the parent. But, they wouldn't even wait in the line to sign out with the.
How did they sign out, I don't know, so how you get out, because there are two at the door, both clipboards you have to sign.
They just blew by it.
Yeah, I think, I think, you know, I, I understand the frustration in parents not wanting to wait. It's a lo, it takes a long time, it's a long process.
But my kids are waiting in the classroom.
Exactly, and I think, you know, I think at some point, you have to, you have to expect parents, like you said, you have to be more responsible, we can't cover for you because you forgot to send in a note, or you didn't call the office, or, you know, I, I don't know. And the other thing to remember is, if a kid goes home on the bus, and there's no parent there to get them off, they come back to the school. So there needs to be a way for the parents to, to contact the school, and, you know, say, "My kid didn't get off the bus," or, I don't know.
This is another concern of the office staff, is, is there somebody always there to receive a child getting off the bus? And, you know, the reality of the way the office has been staffed, is the answer is no, there's not somebody there. And if the principal and assistant principal are in a meeting, or, you know, if it's PERC, and they're in a meeting after school, they're not there to receive a child who's returned back anyway. So that's another, you know, again, you start to peel back the onion on this, and there's all sorts of layers that have to be addressed. So, that's our busing update.
I'm going to be here next meeting, I feel sick.
You've got the data, and you understand the parameters of it, and, I mean, I, I heard, I heard the teacher say, if you're a bus student, sit on the rug and wait quietly for the buses to be called, which meant, sitting on the rug for at least 13 minutes, maybe 11 on that day. And, that's, again, the reality of what occurred.
Do they call, do they wait for all of the buses to arrive, before they start calling buses?
No, they called, so they called, you know, 1, 2, so you can look at it, like, at 2:58, you only had 1, 2, 3 there. So they're being called down, and then as the next bus rolls in, they'll say, "Announce such and such a bus."
But dismissal isn't till 3:10.
They could start early, if the buses get there on time, but you can see, in most schools, you wait till all the buses are there. You don't start calling by the ones that have arrived, you say, you know, they're all there at 3:07, so you should start dismissal at 3:10.
Yeah.
And they'd be out of the yard at 3... See, they're leaving the yard at 3:12. So you, you could, actually, that's, apart from, they can't all be departing at 3:12, maybe they are, I don't know. I think they're, I think they're phasing out at that point.
So you're telling me on Monday, 9, 9, 9:09, at the bus, they finished pickup at 3:03, and they didn't start loading the buses until 3:10? Because there were already six buses there. He could be loading those at 2:58, when the other ones start coming in.
Nope, they got the all-clear, so they started calling at 3:03. The last bus got there at 3:10. So the last bus got called at 3:10, the first bus left the yard at 3:17. And, yeah, it's a process.
But it's a 20-minute process.
Yeah.
I think we can button that up.
But I think.
I think we should button it up, I, I think packing my kids up at 2:45, when dismissal isn't until 3:10, is a big issue. I have a problem with that.
At, at 10 minutes of is when they start packing the kids up. Is that?
That's when they go.
That's when they go.
Yeah.
The, the early bell?
Yeah, but they need to be packed up five to 10 minutes before.
All right?
Thank you.
We can talk about arrival later.
I thought it was late.
No, in two weeks now.
Yeah, okay.
We're supposed to be out 15 minutes ago, and we haven't got.
You can't go by that time.
Well, Michelle just leaves the same time.
I would like, it's, it's school board time.
I know, I'm sorry.
I'd like to make two statements.
First, I think we get tied down way too much in the operation of schools. We get tied down way too much in discussions about what Dr. Jettie and the principal's job, not, not ours. And, and it takes forever, this, I mean, there's a problem with the buses, but, I'm sorry, Mike, that's his job, not, not ours to talk about. We can call him as parents and give him advice, but that's just.
I'm hearing from parents.
And, we all do, but that's just right from the train, I mean, these meetings go on forever.
Yes, they do.
I mean, not to knock it, but I checked four different districts last week, because I sat here going on forever, and they're all getting out early, and they all schedule two hours.
You're right, it's not our job to fix the problems, we need to keep it.
So, anyways, I do have one school board comment, as a school board member, not as an individual, so I stay here. I stay here, so.
Are you one of us, or one of them?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure, so, the budget committee and the selectmen are doing facility tours. And, I just wanted to point out, part of the reason I ran for school board was because of the sophomore slash senior projects. And I heard over and over again, as we went through tours last week, that paintings needed, weeding, landscaping, historical society could use help, people needed volunteer hours. And, I could be wrong, when the, the whole sophomore senior project was rolled out, it was community service, veteran, and we have nobody doing it, and I, I just, I'd still love to go back to that discussion between you and Bill, not between us, the possibility of some type of clearinghouse, where people can, can add stuff to a list, so students have opportunities. I know Town Hall, they're talking about painting inside, not up in the rafters, they wouldn't have to get on anything but, like, the lower part on the inside, and I know they're talking about painting the outside.
So is that a sophomore project, is it sophomore community-based?
I just wanted to put it, put the idea out there, because I heard the same thing over and over again, I mean, I don't, I don't mean it badly, but nothing ridiculously skilled, you know, just painting, weeding, landscaping, things like that, and it just.
That'd be great.
I'd love to see that, you know, save the town some money, and, and get an impactful, painting dugouts, I think was brought up by somebody, you know, there's just different things. So that was it, I just heard that.
Anyone else have some comments?
Are they doing tours of the, when are their tours of the?
There's no, I, I keep hearing about tours of the school, I don't have anything scheduled for school tours.
I thought you said they wanted to see the GMS.
No, they brought up, they had asked some questions about food service, it overspent. And I was telling them how impressed I was when Mike took them to tour, and they expressed an interest, and I said, "Get up, contact Mike as parents and get a tour."
They, they did ask to tour the food service areas.
And I told, I did tell them.
But I countered with, I think there's more to see than food service.
And I told them that was a during-the-day thing, and it, and it just came up, because they were questioning the overage issue. And I had explained how she's getting us, kind of rightening the ship, getting us back on track.
Yeah, absolutely, and I think, but I think too, I mean, if their purpose in touring the town facilities was to get an idea of what the budget requests are for, and.
The selectmen brought it up, so I think it would have to come from us to schedule the tours and invite the budget. I'm sorry, I should have.
Yeah, no, I.
I think the, the budget committees kind of ran the last one, because not a lot of selectmen are available, but it was a selectman-directed thing.
Okay, I wouldn't have a heart, I would, I think they should, they should tour schools and see if we have big facilities in the budget this year, if big requests, I think we should offer, extend to them an invitation.
Any other school board comments? We're going to go back to Dr. Jettie for a few minutes.
Just, two, two other quick things, so, the mental health clinician at the high school, we did do that higher out of the budget. So, the, the money that was budgeted, the school psychologist, since we were not able to find a school psychologist, we're using the budget money in order to fund that position, so. And then the supplemental grant, Devin is going to use that to contract with school psych services as needed. So, that way, it'll be a, a way to get at this and make sure that the budget money gets spent. So that was great feedback from the board, I want you to know that that's what we've done. I talked briefly about Alice drills before, so if there's any questions, please send them my way. I feel like we're, we're rolling this out as sensitively as we can. And I got a great email from the Litchfield Police today, because they participated at the high school, and saw the drills, the tabletop drills there, so, that's a huge plus. So thanks for, police and fire have been very helpful throughout all of this. And then the last thing I just want to bring up is the teacher's contract, so you probably saw the HLN. There has been an appeal made to the, to the judge who granted the motion to allow us to have the special election. The intervenor, George Lambert, has indicated that he is going to appeal this to Supreme Court. And so that was in the HLN, I'm not telling you anything that wasn't out there. I had a conversation with our school attorney to say, "Okay, so what happens if there's an appeal to the Supreme Court, what does that mean?" And he said, "You're really talking about a question of legal, should the judge have made this decision? Unless there's an injunction that goes along with it, which is highly unlikely, we will be able to continue to implement based on what the voters tell us. So if the voters support this, we will be able to implement that finding, unless there is a very rare case where an injunction is placed on it, which Mike did not feel would be likely." So I just wanted the board to understand that, I want the public to understand that.
It wouldn't overturn it, then, if the vote went forward?
It would be moot at that point, because it would have already been implemented. And, oh, so the other piece is that Mike said a Supreme Court ruling is two years out. So, it would take that long to potentially get the ruling, and so the likelihood that it would be, there'd be an injunction to stop it, it would be more a question of, could you do this in the future? That's right. So, just to understand that process, all right? Now I'm done.
No, I got one more, maybe you can clarify, because I know there's some conversation about buses and cameras.
Yeah, so let me, let me clarify with everybody, because I guess there was a Facebook feed. So first of all, all 10 brand-new buses are actually here. So they are on, the day I was at GMS, it must have been Monday, because it, it was the first day that all 10 buses were deployed in the fleet, so, and I was mistaken, they came from North Carolina, not Michigan, but they are all here. The buses came with three cameras installed. Two cameras in the bus that pay attention to students, another that sort of watches the driver in the door and out the windshield area, so that's the other camera, they come pre-installed on the buses. We contracted with First Student to install the fourth camera, which is on the back corner, watching the stop sign. So that when the bus stops, and the stop sign comes out with flashing red lights, and by the way, if you haven't seen one of these new buses, the flashing lights are, I mean, they are obnoxious. If you aren't seeing this thing, I don't know what you're paying attention to, because they're not the blinking lights like the old train signal. These things are flickering and flashing, I mean, it is, holy cow, yeah, so really obvious. Anyway, that camera will be watching that stop sign, and if a car goes through that stop sign, Anyway, that camera will be watching that stop sign. And if a car goes through that stop sign, it'll capture the action of the car going through, the license plate and the driver. That will be turned over to Litchfield Police.
Did they get them?
Those cameras have not been installed yet. Because they they had to wait for all ten buses to arrive and now they're going to begin the process. So we'll get an answer from the yard. But now that they're all here, he said the bus, the cameras were in boxes waiting for the buses. And now they're gonna have the installer just knock them out and they'll be installed very quickly. So I apologize, drivers apparently weren't even aware that we ordered that. Because I guess some drivers online were indicating my bus doesn't have that. It's like, well, yet. But I thought they, I I think they should have known it was coming, so we clarified that.
Um, I just, I just, I don't know if they're old posts or now that all the ten, all ten buses are here, we haven't had any breakdowns with the new buses. Is that right?
We had one.
Just a fender bender.
We we have had breakdowns because. So there've been a couple of announcements that have gone out. Bus nine of all buses. I know.
Bus nine.
Apparently, the parking brake was installed too tight. And so when it got deployed by the driver, it wouldn't turn off. So that got stuck and couldn't move because the brake got jammed. But those are also, I mean, how many people have bought a new car that you've had to bring back a week later and get something adjusted on it? So it's the nature of a new bus.
We don't have to bring them back to North Carolina, though, do we?
No, our our people here can do it. But they're also, you know, if you put the parking brake on somewhere out in the field, there's not a mechanic there. You have to wait. And so that's what happened. So I think eight and seven picked half the kids up and, you know, it all worked out.
Thanks.
Yep.
They'll bring us the public input.
Bad. Hi, I'm Melissa Reiki. I live thirteen Madica. And I know that dress code is on the agenda for tonight. So I just wanted to kind of give my experience of how it has affected us. My daughter last year was dress coded three times. One time she was wearing a romper that is beautiful and she wear, she wore it to church. She wore it to family gatherings. So it's, I feel very appropriate. Otherwise, I wouldn't have allowed her to wear that to school or to church, I mean. Um, sorry, I'm super nervous.
Don't be nervous.
It's only like millions of people watching.
Why was that dress coded? Was it the stretch?
It was too short.
What school was this?
LMS. So and she is tall. Um, oh, that's my alarm. It's time to stop talking about dress code.
It's time for bed, I think.
Um, so the other ti, um, one of the other times she was dress coded was my husband had bought her these fluffy. Flip flops, rubber bottomed fluffy flip flops. She was dress coded for that. Sent to the office again. I was called again. They said they were slippers. You know what? I thought they were ridiculous. I said that when they came home with them. But she lost out on instructional time for fluffy hard bottomed uh flip flops.
That's from the two thousand five dress code.
Current dress code.
Yeah, current dress code. Um, and then the third thing was she had a softball T-shirt on, which if anybody knows what softball T-shirts are, they're very appropriate. But she had a bralet on, which is a bra that goes up and around the neck. Um, and so all three times she was called out in front of people. Two out of the three, she was sent to the office and I received phone calls for. Now, I didn't have to go and pick her up or anything, but. You know. So. My thought is, you know, she was called out, which is awful for a seventh grade girl. For things that I found to be fine. There's no reason she should have been called out for those things. If she was, and I believe in dress codes, so I'm not saying like there should be no dress code because I actually believe in dress codes, but. I think we need to look at what is getting dress coded. I believe especially at the middle school level, there is. No consistency. Some kids can wear the same outfit as other kids. If there's different body types, those kids are getting called out whereas other. And so anyways, that was kind of what I wanted to say before you got on your topic of dress codes.
Thank you, Melissa. We're never going home.
Marsha Finnegan, one four seven talent. Dress code, dress code. I'm just going by experience of working at the high school. And these are some examples I see of how they dress. They do wear pajamas and slippers. And it's not on the days where they're allowed to wear pajamas and slippers. They have thongs on with the spandex pants that are paper thin, so you can see everything. Shorts, the cheeks are hanging out. The mini skirts, super mini skirts, and then the girls are trying to go upstairs and they'll say, what are you looking at to the guys? Well, needless to say. Tank tops or, excuse me, tube tops.
Seen them.
Lots of times they're wearing it and I.
Midriff showing?
Midriff showing and they're so high up that. Part of their breast is showing on the bottom. V-necks bending over. You might as well just look at their nipples. You know. Let's see, what else?
The guys dressed it all okay, though?
Well, the guys are okay. There's only one thing. They wear these tank tops with the armpits down to here.
Supposed to wear those.
No, they're not supposed to wear them. So and and there's a lot of teachers that are afraid to address the dress code. And most of them are men. And and they they just turn their back to anything. They don't want to say anything. So I stand up and I say something. But I go to the office and then it's up to their hands. But I I think it's time to start, at least in the high school. I don't know the other schools. You you gotta start having a. Something uniformed and 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 start.
Enforcing.
Thank you. Enforcing it and. As one, there was a a principal that used to say no cracks showing, whether it's your butt or your chest, you know. And if she saw that, she'd take them right into the office and they were taken care of. And let's see, I'm just looking at all these notes that I wrote down. The male I spoke to getting the guys that they're, I don't, it's. And then I saw some comment in the WhatsApp. It's it's saying that. It's it's something about the education and it's not, why is that distracting to the education? It's not distracting to the education. It's distracting to the other students that have to look at this.
They called that body shaming when this came up before.
Well, I don't care. I mean, as females, we all used to dress that way. And we're we're doing it for attention. That that's all when you're that age. I used to do it that way and stuff. I don't know of any female that didn't. So I I I'd just like to see some uniformity, something. With, I'm trying to think of a nice way to put this stuff. I think it's 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 time to, in the high school, this is my only case, that. We've we've got to let these kids take the fall for it, for how they dress. We can't have the parents intervene and let let the staff and the admin do their thing and say, this is it.
You mean call them out on it. So you're saying it's not being enforced.
They don't call them out. They say, go see someone. Just shoot an email.
Right, yeah, right. There has to be some consistency. There's always T-shirts down at the office from last year's senior class, sophomore class. There's always T-shirts around. And and I I think it's maybe uncomfortable for the admin too because they're males and they have to deal with the female. So, you know, it's it's a tough position that I think everyone's in. It's, yeah. I think it's pretty bad at the high school how they dress. And I'm not an old, I'm I'm old, but I'm not an old prune.
Did you say old prune?
Yeah.
It's a rainbow hair.
So that's all. And and I heard something about lunch was mentioned. And third lunch at the high school, always running out of food. We have to let the kid, well, this is last year. Now, this year is brand new, but we used to, whenever I was in a class, let the kids out early for third lunch so they could get down there just to have lunch. So I don't know if it's improved any or not, but.
Thank you.
Could be why we lose some money in the cap.
One, sophomore projects, LMS. Two young ladies came in and printed, painted two murals on our walls. They're phenomenal.
They are phenomenal.
They are beautiful. And if you haven't seen them, and I was in there over the summer when the girls were working. They were polite. They were courteous. They needed a couple brushes. They did a phenomenal job. So showcasing that as an opportunity for other students. And I cannot tell you the number of staff members who have said, wow, that looks really great.
Were those sophomores or seniors?
Those are sophomores, both girls.
Where are the murals?
There's one on the other, like by the gym on one side of the library and on the other is by the bobcats. And they they did a phenomenal job. Boy, am I glad I'm not at the high school. Dress code. Good luck because being in a middle school and having teenage girls that grow up, they are smarter than us. Those girls know exactly how to shift their shorts down just long enough so that they go, look, I made it. And then the minute that they walk away, they hike them right back up.
They tie their shirts.
And they tie their shirts and they wear little jackets over their shirts and they say, look, my belly's not showing. Let me do this. So it's it's just a tough, tough. So good luck because it, we see it every day at the middle school. It's hard because they can take something that looks totally risque and somehow magically turn it into something that you're like, I don't know, is that okay? Right? Just by the way they stand on the things that they do. But my other question is, and I'm gonna try to keep it really quick and short. I just noticed in your minutes, four hundred and twenty thousand dollars from the state that could possibly come back at the end of September. Is that still on the table? Yes or no?
That's up to the governor.
That's if the governor's, those, but it's still possible.
So that's that's additional revenue that the legislature passed, the governor vetoed, but now they're in the process of trying to figure it out. So the answer is that, and actually, I think the governor said that he's at ninety nine percent agreement with the legislature as of yesterday. So what we're fully expecting is revenue that we didn't plan on. We didn't put in our budget to arrive from the state. And the number is somewhere in the four hundred thousand.
So yes, it's still possible. If it comes.
More than that, I think, but yeah.
Yeah, it's, I I just read.
I think the governor's number was like over five hundred thousand.
I think you're right.
If that money comes to our district, does it have to be spent in this academic year?
So it's revenue versus budget, right? So we have a budget on how much we're gonna spend, but this is revenue that's coming in. So what it would do is it would offset the amount of money we need to raise for taxes. So whatever we spend, that's revenue that we would not, that would come from the state and not the local taxpayer.
So then that would be diverted back to the taxpayer as relief. It would not be extra money that could be to to do other things in the district. You couldn't build a building. You couldn't, right? So this would just mean that for a year, our tax bill might drop, but we're not gonna see anything else.
It's gonna be a change in how they calculate the adequacy grant and education funding. So I would anticipate that if they change that formula one year, they're gonna keep it consistent in years going forward. So it'll be additional money that will feed back into the district and it will offset the tax rate going forward. The the local tax assessment will will go down over time.
Right, but you can't build kindergarten classrooms with. It's not extra money that's coming in. It's really just a tax rate for taxpayers so that maybe they could decide.
It's unrestrict, it's unrestricted revenue that's just going to offset. But if we're asking the taxpayers, I'll I'll give you an example. So we're asking the taxpayers to fund a collective bargaining agreement worth two hundred and, I don't know the number, two hundred and ninety thousand dollars. Knowing that, by the way, when we said, here's the tax rate, we weren't, we didn't see this money on the radar. So we're asking for an extra two hundred and ninety. Here's an extra four hundred and something coming from the state. And so in the end, the teacher's agreement is kind of being funded by that as one lens, one way of looking at it. You can't say it's going to pay that bill, but the point is here's extra revenue we weren't expecting. So we're asking additional expenditure. We're also saying there's extra revenue.
And do we have any timeframe? This says end of September?
Uh, well.
Or is it just this, they could keep challenging it back and forth?
So the state should have had a budget on July first. They did. They passed a continuing resolution which kept government going until the end of September. So they know they've got a deadline to do one or two things, settle on the budget and let us all know, or pass another continuing resolution to keep government open. Or I guess let it shut down. That would be fun.
And that's September thirty?
That's right.
Okay, so September thirtieth, we would know one way or the other, whether we're in for another month of fun or.
And the report in the news is that they're, like I said, ninety nine percent there. They've got this figured out. They're just little details. So we should get some announcement fairly soon on what it's gonna look like.
And it looks good for us.
Litchfield benefits, it it's because of the way the calculation is done. It's got to do with the per pupil valuation. And because we're not a town with a large commercial property base, that's why we're benefiting under this formula.
That was it. Thank you. Sorry, I was trying to make that quick, but.
You're welcome.
I had to get caught up for a whole summer's worth on this.
Thank you. Anyone else with public input? So I I know that there's someone still in the audience who just spoke about dress code and the other woman that left. But I'm gonna ask the board that in the interest of time that we move our conversation as far as dress code, because I don't think it's gonna be a short conversation.
No, it won't.
To our next meeting.
Liz is ready to. Yeah, I.
Do you need a motion or?
Yeah, we can table that for next time.
I don't, it's not that I want to avoid the the subject, but I don't think it's gonna be a short conversation. So I I would strongly suggest that we have two topics on our next meeting.
Dress code, I'm serious, dress code and GMS.
But what about, all right, what about lunch?
Lunches, buses, dress code.
Yeah.
It's all GMS.
And superintendent bill.
All right, so we have minutes from September fourth, two thousand nineteen for approval.
Another minutes for.
Make the motion to approve September fourth, twenty nineteen minutes. Through a second. Any conversation? Hearing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained, four zero. They'll bring us the BA report.
All right, so I provided my written report, which has a bunch of numbers in it related to food service. I'm not gonna dissect every number in it. I'm gonna try and give a few highlights as to what's been going on since July first of eighteen, some of the things that we've done in the food service. They worked on reconfiguring the GMS kitchen, better utilization of space and replacement of some outdated equipment. Let's see, there was a change in hours. This is a big one, a change in hours for certain positions, making them benefit eligible, which increased the cost from FY eighteen to FY nineteen by forty two thousand dollars in salaries and benefits.
And we've made that adjustment for this year.
They remained in the budget at those levels.
So that cost won't be deferred, but it's budgeted.
Yes.
This year.
Yep. The portion sizes, and this may have something to do with the meal counts, the portion sizes at the high school. The kids at the high school are being served elementary school sized portions of food.
How did you find that out?
Huh?
How did you find that out?
Lauren.
Oh, interesting.
Yeah, so the same size of a pasta meal that you're serving to a six-year-old first grader, you're also serving to an eighteen-year-old senior. Doesn't work. So that led to them buying additional meals.
That works.
A little bit more revenue, but now, I mean, even though we've seen it, they're not buying double lunches now. And it may have reduced some of the à la carte. Greater utilization of the USDA Commodities and Surplus Distribution Program. In the past and in past years, they've used that to order canned goods. So now you have this mass quantity of stored canned goods in there when you should be using that money to buy meats and cheeses and the and the higher end products. So. The year going into this school year, it was actually done by one of the food service leads. This year it was done by Lauren. So now we're getting those higher end products to that money and using. So now we're getting those higher-end products through that money and using, uh, our own dollars towards the cheaper items. So let's see, so the total costs associated with the food service program were up thirty thousand dollars last year, about six percent. So if we look at deficit, there was a forty thousand dollar deficit at the end of the year, but the revenues in every area were actually up, so if you look at the numbers, we were up five percent in local revenues, five, five percent in the federal, the only one that was down a little bit was the state revenue, which isn't a big, big piece of the pie. Which leads me through this analysis to say we can, we can really say that it's tied to those positions moving to benefits, it was a personnel decision going into or during last school year that led to this this loss, because our revenues are actually up and the servings are are becoming better. Lauren's plan is to be into GMS pretty much full-time within the next couple weeks, which means she's gonna relocate down there and work with them to improve that program. So all these things are going, the investment in any equipment is now done, we're done at this point, in moving some things around, we should be, we should be pretty good to go for this year, and I'll keep a close eye, what's happening?
Unless we have a failure.
Hopefully not, but. Right now, we're in, we're in good shape, most of the equipment is in pretty good shape and pretty new.
Does she expect, so she expects to be self-funded this year?
Yeah, I'm gonna keep a close eye on it as well. Secondly, the athletic transportation, which I provided the the spreadsheet looking at that, uh, the way that First Student is billing us and the way that we agreed to, has led to that large increase in what it is, because it has the mileage rate and everywhere we play is most of the way to Canada, so you know, when you have mileage increased, you know, we're paying more, so we met with First Student last Friday to discuss a bunch of issues, we're going to put an amendment into the contract to bring us back to the way it was built last year. The rate, the hourly rate will go up a little bit, just because from year to year, they're gonna do that, but it'll get us back in line with where where we were.
Will they do a flat fee again?
I, I didn't know they were doing a flat fee.
Okay.
They've never done a flat, there's a flat hourly rate.
Five eighty-six is what I was told the flat fee was for trips.
I've never heard of a flat rate.
Five eighty-six?
Yeah.
Then that was, that was something that may have been negotiated with the the bus company outside of the regular contract.
Oh, maybe.
But that's not how it's built, it's a flat, it's a flat hourly rate, is what we were doing. Right now, we're doing a mileage rate plus hourly. So it's.
That's why the seven hundred and ninety-two, just for those four games.
So when they still be looking for that compensation, it's in the contract as far as mileage.
Well, we're gonna do, we're gonna do an amendment and bring the rate, the rate schedule back to what we did previously, and negate this.
Eliminate mileage?
Go back to a flat hourly.
And they're gonna allow that?
They were, they were open to it.
What 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 they said is they bid it two ways, and we selected the current rate, the hourly and the mileage, we actually, we costed out, we thought it was gonna be beneficial, and then once we got the first couple of bills, we were like, whoa, wait a second here, so they said, well, you know, we bid it, you selected this, we can do it the other way, so.
So I would think the contracts then, you're saying we got a selection of of two. The dollar amount on those two contracts, were they the same, just the inside body of it was different?
The rate, like, the the rate schedule for co-curricular and athletic shifted from one contract to the next. So how they bill us for.
What are you saying, in the contract, it's not a total dollar amount for sports, it's a.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Per game?
Per game? Like, let's say the bus contract is costing us ten million dollars for five years. That's including co-curricular. So they just did it differently, but they gave you two options, they were both ten million, I take it.
No, so, and so to to run the regular buses, just pick kids up every day for your school. That's a flat rate, okay, then field trips are an addendum almost, and so they said, okay, so for field trips, outside of all those regular runs, there's two ways to bill, you can do it this way, or you can do it this way. And we selected this, the way we're currently doing it, hours and miles, we costed out and we thought it was gonna be less expensive. So when we went back to them and said, holy cow, this was not what we thought it was gonna be, they said, well, you can do it the other way, which is just a flat hourly. It's not last year's flat hourly, it's an increase for everybody, but we can select that option, because they said it was.
I guess that's what I'm saying, so then you're telling me there's a dollar value differential between the two, two different types of contracts, so they're willing to take a loss? Obviously, there's a loss if they would, if you're saying.
I mean, they make fifty-seven thousand dollars per bus per year that's on the road, they're not gonna take a loss on, it it won't be a loss for them.
It just won't be as much of a profit.
That's correct.
But athletics, it would drain the athletic budget, because we have to travel to Nova Scotia.
And do you know how soon before they may accept this?
I'm gonna submit, I'm gonna, uh, submit the amendment by the end of this week and have them accept it, and we'll get going on the next.
Go to hourly instead?
No, go to flat rate.
It's a flat hourly.
Oh, flat hourly, instead of the hourly.
Instead of having hourly plus miles.
And will they, will they reimburse what we've already spent?
I don't, I would highly doubt that.
On the desk, I mean, it's nice that we caught this now and just get it for five years rather than.
All right, uh, last couple things.
I need to see the football team have to be paid for play, Liz.
I know, I would too.
Because that's what it'd be, Liz, it'd be the football team, that's fair.
Why, because they're the only ones that travel to every place under the sun? They have two buses.
Two buses.
No one should sit in the same bus with the stuff, the bags, nobody.
I have a nice open-air pickup truck, I can throw all the crap in the back, and we can have a big grounds trailer, I can pull with it. All right, last couple things, just financially, districtly, uh, for the district, the DOE twenty-five, MS twenty-five, I've contacted the state, asked them to give me a couple more days because of the e-finance upgrade that we've been going through, has really thrown a wrench in a bunch of things lately, so that'll be in by this Friday. I believe you, you already signed the cover sheets and everything, so we will be ready to go, I can submit that. There is a upcoming potential change in Medicaid funding. So just to give some, and Mike will follow up, he's got more of a full, full understanding of the whole thing, but consistently, we budget a hundred thousand dollars for Medicaid reimbursement each year, basically with the change in those laws, we're not, we're not going to be allowed, if this goes through, to budget that as anticipated revenue, making another thing that would pass down to local taxation to offset, right? So the cost of special ed obviously aren't going to go down, so we lose that funding, like last year, we budgeted a hundred, a hundred thousand, we got a hundred thirty-seven. You take a hundred thirty-seven, go to zero, then we have to make that up through local taxation, and then.
But then they get reimbursed afterwards.
I.
The, so, uh, DHHS is saying that, uh, the only way to do it is if a, there are three people who can prescribe the treatment, and it has to be a doctor, it has to be a nurse practitioner, I don't remember who the third is, but like that, doctor, nurse, practitioner, it might be a physician's assistant or whatever. And so no longer can we have like our speech paths say, this is required, it's gotta be signed off on by a medical professional. So what we're hearing is that the one thirty-seven that we got back last year, if audited, might be called into question, we might have to give some of that back, which hurts what we've just done. Therefore, the hundred that we budgeted this year, we're not able to bill toward, and when we start building the budget, or when, we're starting the budget, but the budget you're gonna see in October, we're not gonna put any revenue in there, because we're being told we can't collect it, so. And I had a conversation with Lauren, I'm like, well, could we hire a doctor and have them sign off on all these and bill that against Medicaid? And she's like, no, it's gotta be, they they won't pay for consulting, so we're trying everything we can, but it's a change in DHS, DHHS's rule level. Now, you should have gotten a letter from the School Board Association, it's been appealed to JELCAR to determine whether it was an allowed change, although we're hearing it's because of some federal statute, so I'm not sure that there's much anybody's gonna be able to do about it. So what's the bottom line, it's a hundred thousand dollars less, so when Robin talks about supplemental revenue.
There it goes.
It's being offset by other cuts, so just keep that in mind.
All right.
Does she have any questions?
Anybody have anything for Cory?
I've had enough with you this week.
So next thing we have is memorandum of understanding for music.
Yeah, we just wanted to put a bow on, so we had the discussion last year, um, and this was relative to music lessons, so if you remember, we wanted to shift the way, um, currently, the parents were writing checks to the school district, the school district was running that money through our accounts, and then paying back to the music teachers who were doing lessons. So this is just a memo of understanding with music teachers who wanna offer lessons to children here in the district. We reviewed policy KG, which is on the use of school facilities, um, talks about rental of rooms, et cetera. So what we're proposing this, this is just a draft for the board to consider, but basically, section one of the agreement says that the board is agreeing to waive the requirements of facility use in KG to allow the teachers of the Litchfield Music Program to offer private music lessons to Litchfield students using uh, the time other after-school activities are offered, so we're not talking about opening the building on a weekend, or, you know, some other strange hours. This is just when other school activities are being sponsored, that they could use their space for your charger, so you're waiving that fee.
Mike, does that leave it open then, if there's a football game and somebody wants to do a lesson, and they're to be allowed in? No, because the building is locked.
Yeah, it would have to be when the school is, we can tweak that wording to make it clear that it's.
Do we need to?
It's not like everybody else is outside and you get to go inside, it's gotta be when the school building is open. Two, it just basically says, and and I've looked at this, I mean, our instructors are charging substantially less than what a parent would pay at, I'm sorry, Manchester Community Music School, so as long as they keep their rates substantially less, I think it's a win-win for our families um, and for the students, and the fact that they're not driving all the way to Manchester for this, right, it's something they can access here in town. Uh, so three, the lessons are offered to Litchfield students only, so you can't open the gates up and start, you know, having students from outside of town come in at this discounted rate, and finally, um, that the families just have to know that they're not district or school-sponsored activities, because it can feel pretty school-sponsored when you're seeing your music teacher in your school, they just have to understand this is a supplemental agreement between the families and the and the teacher. And finally, oh, it's in, it's in clause two, I'm sorry, that the instructors, um, are then responsible for that income. So we're out of the business of keeping track of income and reporting it against anything else, it's just between them and Uncle Sam.
Remind me, I think we had this discussion a long time ago, but remind me why music teachers are allowed to give lessons at the school and teachers are, it's not a practice for teachers to offer tutoring or extra services?
Teachers aren't allowed to tutor their own students, but they are allowed to tutor other students.
But that's not true for music then, because this is considered different?
Because it's, it's not, um, giving, okay, we did discuss that.
We did, I do, I remember discussing it, but I feel like it was so long ago.
This isn't impacting a student's grade, so if I'm the chemistry teacher and I'm tutoring one of my chemistry students and you're paying me extra to do that, versus I should probably just be doing that, these are families that are in the past, um, would be going to a music school to get additional lessons, supplemental lessons for their child, and they're saying, why, why should I go pay some random teacher somewhere else when you know my child best and I'm willing to pay you for it, and it doesn't impact the child's grade?
But it could.
It doesn't, though.
It could.
Not the way they grade.
Are they using Litchfield School District emails and our, our communicate, are they using our emails to communicate about their private lessons?
I think it's all word of mouth, I I think when Carolyn, did Carolyn come and speak to us, she did, right?
Yes.
I think when she spoke of it, it was just word of mouth, people were approaching her.
She just said, come at one, come at three thirty for drum lessons, and I'd be there at three thirty with my check.
I I I think, I mean, Brian makes a point, which is that I'm the band teacher, and I have three trumpeters, and two are taking lessons from me and one isn't, and now I have to name the first trumpeter, and probably the student who's getting lessons is more skilled, maybe, and so, you know, so what, it could be perceived that, oh, because you're paying for lessons, you're getting named for share, but in reality, you may be the better trumpeter because you're getting lessons, so it's a.
Or you might be a better trumpeter because you're just good at it.
Well.
Well, you might suffer and your parents are paying to make you better.
So it's 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 really hard to discern exactly what that is, but I think somebody could say, oh, well, they got picked because, anyway.
Just my feedback is number four, maybe we could put in there also that, so that they have to inform the families that it's not let district or school-sponsored activities, but also that no, no school district emails be used for communication about.
Why?
Mixing a private, a private business.
I don't know, I feel like we discussed all of these, it's late now, so my brain is fried, but.
I don't think we discussed that.
I don't see a problem with them using their district email.
You don't.
Anybody?
I do.
I don't ever remember emailing her at all. I don't know what happened when he went in there, he didn't get any better.
Say that.
That's not a good pitch.
Okay, well, I don't have any experience with it, so.
You want to motion on this?
I think so, just so, if you're in agreement with those.
Yeah, I think we beat this one stick last time.
I'll make a note of that MOU, um, for the facility use for music lessons.
Further discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained.
Okay, we'll get those signed off on, thank you.
Manifest all set?
I signed it.
There is no public for public input, so.
We waited them all out.
I'm gonna go into non-public, IRSA ninety-one dash A, colon, three one one. The special promotion or compensation of any public employee or disciplining of such employee with the investigation of any charges against him unless the employee affected, one, has a right to a meeting, and two, requests that the meeting be open, in which case, the request should be granted. The hiring of any person as a public employee, see, matters which are discussed in public, would likely adversely would likely affect adversely the reputation of any person other than a member of the body of the agency itself, unless such person requests an open meeting.
Yes.
Yes, yes. Hearing none, public.